Good evening. Today is March 17th. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome our two new members and our two members that were re-elected. I wanted to let the community know that everyone has been sworn in. So, all of our board members are rightfully seated at the table, and we welcome you. So, our first order of business would be to please join me and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as this is our first meeting since the election, we will have our reorganization. So, our first order of business will be to request nominations for the position of Chair. Does anyone have a nomination? Rheta?
I'd like to nominate Heather Traipas for Chair.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mrs. Traipas. Are there any other nominations to be considered for the position of Chair? Okay, seeing no other nominations, all in favor of casting a vote in favor of Mrs. Traipas as Chair, please signify by raising your hands. I believe that is everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. I'm happy to hand it over to you, Heather.
Appreciate it. All right, so the next is nomination for Vice Chair. So, do I have a nomination for Vice Chair? Ginny?
Caroline.
All right. Is there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, we're going to raise our hands to vote. All those in favor, aye, yes, raise your hand, and it's, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ex unanimous?
Thanks, everyone.
All right, so we're going to move on to Policy BCA, which is our ethics policy. So, for the new board members, we did this last year, and we, this is what we're expected, how to behave type thing. So, we usually do a motion to approve it. It is saying that you'll adhere to the policy. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to reaffirm Policy BCA.
Yep, thank you, Jared.
Second.
By Shane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students? Opposed? Abstaining? We're unanimous. And then, the next thing is our school board committees, especially for Laura and Vanessa. So, the school board has subcommittees. All board members are expected to be on at least two, if not three. We put them in order here. It gives you a time of when they meet, so it helps to figure out information with your families, alternatives. Person is if somebody on the board can't be there, then the committee chair is called, and then you call it in. So, there's a bunch here. So, we ask that you fill them out. Everybody fills them out, get them to me before the next board meeting, because then I compile them all together, and then we bring it back to the board to approve. So, if you have any questions on any of these subcommittees, reach out to me or Denise, or any board member can help you guys. All right, moving on. Correspondence.
So, two things in the correspondence folder this evening to share with the board. The first is an email that I received from Mrs. Charles, who is our Library and Media Specialist in New Boston, but she's also one of the advisors for our robotics team. So, she's got some really cool pictures. Our kids had a really good event. They partnered up with a team from Maine and had a great event, so that's the first thing. And the second thing, this evening, Mr. Gross will be bringing up a couple of bills for the board to be aware of, not the least of which is House Bill 147, which has to do with property and insurance carrying for municipalities. So, Derek Horn, our town administrator, did a really great thoughtful email to our state reps about this, so I wanted to share that with the board as well.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, good news. Commendations, Brady?
All right, so, school counselors have started their one-on-one meetings with all students for future planning and course selection, so, like, just choosing your classes for next year and knowing kind of what you're doing after college, especially if you're more of a junior or senior. Student Council had their canned food drive, which I think I've talked about before, but kind of just the results from that. Overall, we raised around, I want to say $400, $500, I don't remember the exact number, and we had a good amount of cans that we were able to donate.
Nice.
This week is winter carnival, so we're having our dress-up days. Today was St. Patrick's Day, hence the hat I've been temporarily gifted. And then, we're going to be having our assembly this Friday. I don't remember when it happened, but Wrestling had their Division II State Championships, which they did win, so they are the back-to-back Division II State Champions as a team, which is just really cool. On that, we had Ben Walton come first in his weight class of 132, and then we had Adrian Reeves win her first, or Adrian, no, word, sorry. Adrian Reeves also came first in the 114 weight class, and she was the first girl wrestling state champion in GHS history.
Wow.
And I believe she came fourth in the New England meet, so, just really cool stuff there. And then, it's Music in Our Schools Month, so we're having a concert this Wednesday in the theater at 7:00. That's all.
Thank you, Brady. Go ahead, Mrs. Bean.
GHS hosted our eighth grade students on Monday, March 10th, for Welcome Day. Students attended a session where they were given information about registering for classes and promoting getting involved in school when they get here. Peer outreach members served on a panel to help answer questions that they had about transitioning to high school. Then, 35 peer outreach members served as our ambassadors and gave the eighth graders personalized tours. I got to meet some of those eighth graders during those tours, which was fun. And then, they stayed after school and into the evening, and then toured 200 parents through the building, and then stayed to help answer questions in my favor. And Admin gave their little spiel about welcoming to eighth grade. On Tuesday, November, on Tuesday, March 11th, Teacher Workshop Day, Shree Salter, who's one of our school nurses, ran her first CPR skills class for five faculty members who are all now CPR certified. Andy Pishka from Anro Kappa, as well as some members of the sophomore class, were recognized on the town clerk's page of the town report for their efforts with helping with the elections. So, kudos to them. Our emotional behavioral specialist, who is Veronica Joyce, shared that she's implemented social-emotional strategies this year for some of her students who previously had no interventions. And we, the results of that, what we're seeing is decreased behaviors from several students who've received this intervention, related to their behavior rather than acting first without thinking, their thinking ahead of time related to their behavior, and making it easier for them to make connections with other students in ways that their behaviors previously held a barrier. So, that's good news. Lisa DiMarco and Emma Vanderpoel, two of our language teachers, led 13 students on a tour of Italy and Greece over February break. They visited various monuments and sites of historical importance across, I'm going to slur some of this, Rome, Naples, Pompeii, Delphi, Mycenae, and Athens. It was educationally enriching experience for all of the students, and Lisa and Emma want to thank the school board for your support in extending learning opportunities for our students. All of our French classes are participating in a fun international music event called Manny Musical, following March Madness schedule. Students made brackets, and French songs from around the world are competing in head-to-head competitions to see which will be the top song for the year. French classes from more than 7,000 schools in 35 countries are participating. All of our Spanish classes are also participating in an international March Madness music competition. This is the second year that they've been participating in this event. The first, and it's also the first year in the tournament's history that participants are coming from all continents except for Antarctica, which is super exciting. School board members can check the voting progress on the bulletin board by the gym on your way out of the building, for they will reveal their first, the song that wins the first week of April. This event has increased exposure to accessible language, who doesn't love to sing along to a good song, and cultures in Hispanic countries, and it has been fun to see the students, which songs the students like. Some of their votes have been really close. Nine peer outreach members attended a workshop held at SNHU called Getting to Y. This was put on by Up for Learning, a nonprofit in New Hampshire and Vermont. Getting to Y is an opportunity for students to bring meaning to their own youth risk behavior survey data. Through youth leadership, partnership with adults, precipitory action research, and peer and community engagement, the participants not only experienced personal growth and built their capacity for future civic engagement, but also affected sustainable change in our youth behavior and community and culture. And then, finally, Peer Outreach is putting on the semi-formal dance this Friday from 7:00 to 10:00. The theme is the Red Carpet Hollywood, and the funds will go towards training and workshops for peer outreach members to enhance student leadership around increasing awareness to mental health and drug and alcohol prevention. And that's the news from Goffstown High School.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Appreciate it. So, Mr. Davis is not going to be here tonight, but he did send an update, which will go in the minutes, so you guys can read everything. And is there any other commendations? Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kathy Ball asked me to share the following. This is listed in the town report, but she was very passionate that I say it here. This year, over 50 students from Goffstown High School stepped up to assist with election duties. Interested GHS students living in the surrounding towns were encouraged to reach out to their respective town clerks to offer their assistance with election activities. My town clerk peers were equally as appreciative as I to enlist the participation of our local students. Now, I do apologize for butchering people's names as they come up. Robin Perry, Supervisor of Checklist, coordinated enlistments of students of the sophomore class to help set up polls the day before each election. New Hampshire law does not allow students under the age of 17 to perform election duties inside the rail of the voting floor on Election Day. Approximately a dozen students helped tape instructional signage inside voting booths, along the walls, and down upon the hallway floors leading in and out of the school facility. The students' youthful energy provided valuable assistance to us seasoned poll workers that now find it challenging to get up and down off the floor to tape signage throughout the buildings.
Oh, I get this.
The Ro Kappa GHS Election Group, as before mentioned, under the guidance of student advisor Andy Pishka, participated in the 2024 Presidential Primary and State General Elections. Student group leader Alexa Vicenti, hopefully I pronounced that right, I apologize if I didn't, helped coordinate members as volunteers for the Presidential Primary Election. Clara Roach, Ro Kappa President, helped coordinate student participation signup for the November 5th, ensuring completion of student pre-election required clerical filings and delegations of members on Election Day duties. Students that met the age requirements to work on the voting floor attended an after-school training presented by the town clerk to hear instructions regarding their Election Day duties to process absentee ballots. For those of you that may not know, they actually have to take the information, go stand in line as a voter for the absentee, make sure that they're checked off, and then bring it back to the absentee area.
Wow.
So, a lot of walking and a lot of waiting. Other students participated outside the roped-off voting area on the Presidential Election Day, led by hallway director Richard Bruno. The morning team leader and hallway director Rick Simmons, afternoon team leader, students reported for rotating three-hour shift, each swearing their oath as a poll worker before assuming their duties. At GHS, students covered 16 strategic building locations, provided directional assistance, holding open doors, leading voters to voter registration tables, and distributing handouts regarding the constitutional amendments supplied by the New Hampshire Secretary of State. Hallway director Darlene Bavelli, hopefully I pronounced that right again, led another team of students supporting similar duties at our Bartlett Elementary School. All students participated enthusiastically and exhibited pride in fulfilling their assigned duties as sworn-in poll workers representing Goffstown High School. I would like to personally thank those students that helped out, and Kathy Ball was very ecstatic that we mentioned this during our meeting. On a sadder note, if you didn't know, Kathy's actually retiring. This was her last election that she had, and so she wanted to make sure that this was her send-off to the great students here.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Jared. Appreciate you sharing that. Anyone else? Commendations? Good news? Go ahead, Ginny.
I did get to go to the last performance of Phantom of the Opera, and it was awesome. As always, the kids just did an awesome job, and we enjoyed it immensely.
Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have public comment tonight? Hi, Nancy.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I got the memo to work.
You did? I know, not all of us did. You know the drill.
Yes. Nancy Beederman, 140 Bayam Road, New Boston. I'm here tonight because the other day, March 8th, 9th, I received an email from Power School saying that my daughter's personal information was part of your data breach. I'm very concerned about it, mainly because in the email that I received, it said that they have evidence that my daughter's medical information was involved. And that is very concerning, considering all the other information that was. So, I did send an email to Mr. McBride on Sunday. I didn't hear back from him until Tuesday, and his response was pretty much, "I've shared your concern with the IT Administrator, Steve Burgett. Steve and the SAU Administration are continuing to manage the situation to the best of their abilities in collaboration with Power School and the representatives." In my email to Mr. McBride, I requested that, a copy of all of my child's information, and then after I got the copy, a hard copy of all of the information, I wanted it destroyed. Mr. McBride did not even respond about that. I responded back and said I was not, did not think that his email was acceptable, because again, I was requesting what information that Power School had of my child and what they had actually accessed, and since my child's no longer a student. Then, on Friday at 4:54, as Scott was probably, Gross was probably trying to tie up loose ends, he sent me an email, and with more details, and then he stated that since my child's over 18, that she would have to write a letter. But if you go to your school board policy, it doesn't say that. It says upon a student's graduation from a high school, which I will say probably 90% of the kids at that point are close to, are 18 and above, their parents or legal guardian may request in writing that the district destroy the student's special education records or any other records. A lot of people probably don't realize special ed records are held until their 26th birthday. My child had a 504 plan, I'm assuming, and it was under the special education records, and that is why it is still on the Power School. But then, as I looked into more about local records retention schedule, and looked at all of what was retained and what is supposed to be destroyed, health and physical records are supposed to be destroyed after three years. My daughter graduated four years this coming June, so her record should have been destroyed, all her medical information. Want to know why that happened? And again, medical reports has to be destroyed after three years, and I just would like to know why Power School still had this information. I'm disappointed in the district that when this happened, nothing went out to former students. It was only current students that got an email and notification. So, people that had already graduated, myself included, with my students, daughters that have been gone for quite a bit of time, I didn't think they would be involved in this Power School data breach. And I am requesting the school board to look into this and to have a public hearing and to get to the bottom of this and figure out what's happening. I was also disappointed that in Mr. Gross's email to me, they, he stated that as the school district's business administrator, he's been working with outside legal counsel at Power School and the IT department, and I'm trying to look at the words he said, because I don't want to misquote him, but he pretty much said that the school district did not, only, the school district did notify parents and guardians of current students based on known contact information. However, based on direction from legal counsel, the school district was advised that notification of former students and staff would be handled by the entity responsible for the data breach, Power School. I've also reached out to some IT people, and they disagree that Power School is the only one that is responsible, and that the school district yourself, you are responsible because you were the host. I will tell you that I am very worried for my child right now. She is starting to send out resumes, and if her credit is destroyed as she tries to go get a job, because some employers are now doing credit checks, I am not going to be a happy parent, and you'll hear back from me. I don't understand why people don't understand how much this data is worth out there right now. My high school teacher, my world history teacher, always taught us land equals power, land equals wealth equals power. It's now data equals wealth equals power. So, data is the new currency, and you guys have to do a better job. Nashua, you should have had a wake-up call two years ago, and Nashua paid out over $2 million for when they got hacked. And this is not the first time Power School's been hacked. So, again, I request that you guys form a committee, you do something, and you do a public hearing, and you give a little bit more information to the parents that are out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it.
And you need to change your policy.
All right, and I don't see any other public comment, so I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move on to the approval. We have two sets of minutes. The first one is February 12th. Did everybody have a chance to read them?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 12th as presented.
All right, by Shane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students? Opposed? Abstaining? All right, so we have two abstentions, and the rest are yesters. You get that?
Yeah.
All right, so next is February 17th. Need a motion for that?
Motion?
Oh.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 17th as presented.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second? By Rheta. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student? Opposed? Abstaining? And we have two abstentions as well. Okay, thank you, guys. All right, moving on, now we have committee reports. So, we have the Finance Committee first, manifest and voucher. Caroline, you want to do that?
Yes, so, I will make a motion to approve the February 18th to March 3rd manifest and the total value of $3,627.78.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. Thanks, Shane. Go ahead.
So, a breakdown of the manifest would include $2,135,482.34 in payroll, benefits, and taxes. The largest item on here would be the special ed activity this time around, so I'll just go over a couple of the larger ones. We had in-district and out-of-district transportation of $84,341. Nashua School District be paid $36,308. Special, sorry, Seven Hills, which would be an out-of-district placement for some students, $58,909. Spalding Academy was $13,800, and then Speak Easy Speech was $11,505. For general expenses, we had books, equipment, and supplies, $8,633 to Amazon. We paid Blue-In $14,045 for HVAC and plumbing repairs. We had $16,386 for copier service and managed print, that's a quarterly payment, to Budget Document Tech. We paid Consolidated Communications $9,176 for telephone services. Dead River Company $52,057 for propane. Electricity to EverSource was $14,103. Goffstown Truck Center for regular ed transportation was $155,794. Then, we had facility supplies and equipment to Home Depot Pro for $12,980. SAU 19 assessment was $170,402, and then WB Mason was $5,236 for paper and school supplies. That totaled $458,812.4. And lastly, we had our food service, three different vendors, for a total of $47,138.16.
All right, thank you, Caroline. Any questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student? Opposed? Abstaining? Two abstentions. All right, motion passed. Go ahead, Caroline.
All right, so, I will make a motion to approve the March 6th to March 17th total manifest of $1,807,000, sorry, $1,807,073.30.
All right, do I have a second? By Rheta. All right, go ahead, Caroline.
All right, so, our largest payout here was for payroll taxes and benefits in the amount of $1,313,097.07. And then, special ed activity was quite small this time, $55,926.80, and that included out-of-district tuition to Crest Collaborative for a total of $19,638. Then, we paid Lighthouse School $30,249 for out-of-district services, and special ed transportation through home-based transportation was $6,040. Our general expenses included $11,983 for books, equipment, and supplies from Amazon. We paid Blue-In for HVAC and plumbing repairs, a total of $26,855. Then, we paid BMO Harris Bank, which is our district credit card, for facilities, IT, food service expenses of $5,866. Creative Vision Flooring, this was at MVMS Flooring, it's an insurance claim, I believe water damage, if I remember correctly?
Yes.
$7,500 there. Dead River Company for propane, $23,899. EverSource Electricity was $21,743. Goffstown Truck Center, this would be for late bus, kindergarten, and athletics, $22,695 there. IT equipment for Gov Connection, $42,067, and I believe that is the MVMS laptops. Home Depot Pro, we paid $11,458 for facility supplies and equipment. And then, Northeastern Sheet Metal for the alt building lease, $27,500. We leased that building for our IT department, that's where they work out of. Then, we paid Pelmac Industries $9,445 for security prevention, maintenance, and repairs. And our SAU 19 assessment was $149,099. And then, we replaced some student furniture at MVMS and paid School Specialty $6,717. So, our general expenses totaled $366,827.29. And lastly, our food service was $8,242 to food, for our performance food service.
Great, thank you, Caroline. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students? Opposed? Abstaining? Two abstentions. All right, motion passed.
Quick one.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, if you abstain, then I don't sign the manifest because of that, so as it goes around. So, when these, this is basically what is the legal document that's, that you're, that the board is authorizing payment, and then from there, you know, we release the payment tomorrow, type of thing. When there is no board meeting, Doug and I have authority to pay, and then we report back, which is kind of what we're doing on some of this, so just so you're aware.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. All right, Scott, MS-22 signing?
All right, so, the MS-22 document is going around, and basically what this is, is the MS-22 is your budget. You lost your tiara. I took my hat off, because I wanted to make sure I was serious for this stuff, so. The, it's basically the approved budget for the FY '25-'26 school year. So, at the, last week, voters approved the operating budget, they approved the capital reserve fund deposit, and, you know, so with that, all of those things are included in that, and that is a form that is required by the Department of Revenue Administration and something that, and I should have and I should have said Doug Totten is here, he's the assistant BA who will be the BA next year. And Doug and I worked on getting that form ready. So it is something that the board signs. And then we upload it to the Department of Revenue as a portal. And Denise sometimes helps with that one and that is the official copy. So you'll see two copies going around. In the past, we would have like three or four, but now Denise keeps one and then the business office keeps one. But really the true one is kept on a, online. So that is just, there is no motion required for that, that's just something that board members sign and the two of you can, you know, can sign off on that. So the next one that we discussed in terms of the admin finance committee meeting was IT related and it dealt with E-Rate projects. And if I need backup, Stephen, our IT director is here. But I prepared a memo for you in your packets. E-Rate is a great government program which provides school districts and I learned today libraries as well, the opportunity to get grant funding for connectivity related projects. And based upon our criteria in Goffstown, which is also based on free and reduced lunch, et cetera, we get 50% funding on some of these projects. You'll recall in your capital improvements plan, one of the things that was on there, there's a lot of IT related things, but one of them are what's called switches. And we're trying to replace these switches. They typically will last us five to seven years and Stephen stated that we have some in excess that are older than 10 years. So we're trying to be proactive with this to ensure that our, obviously our connectivity and our network here works well in the Goffstown School District. So with that, there were two, three projects total that Stephen had, had put forth for the opportunity for E-Rate funding because those applications have to go in in the next few weeks, couple of weeks actually, right?
Well, they were, the first round of bids, bids had to go out.
If you speak, you have to come on up.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone, sorry Stephen.
The first, E-Rate requires us to post public bidding on the projects in December. So they've been out for bid for the mandatory 45 days. Before we can actually submit them for funding approval, we have to have the local match squared away. Because otherwise, if I go through and submit for federal funding and we get it, it's even more work to back out of it later.
So with that, you'll recall that in our, in our budget, we do include some E-Rate related projects. And I wanted to share with you, it's budget line 10-000-1100-16-735. So we do budget for some of that. But unfortunately, you know, these, these switches cost, as you can see, they're, they're upwards of $100,000 for some of our schools, you know. So with that, we're proposing to do two things. One, we would need the board's authorization to proceed with the Maple Avenue project. And that one, we already have E-fund matching grants in our budget, that's the line that I just shared with you. The other one, there was two other ones, one was for Mountain View and one was for Goffstown High School. Those have, give or take, around a $50,000 commitment on the district's part. In speaking with the superintendent, IT director and folks in the business office, we feel comfortable that we will have enough money in our capital reserve fund to do one of those. Which, so we're recommending to proceed with the Mountain View one this year and then next year, we would proceed with the high school replacement of those switches. So, long story short is, and I did put this, I think on my proposed motion, is that you would authorize the IT director and myself to process, you know, the applications. When you do get around to the notion of using the capital reserve fund, we will hold a, we have to hold a public hearing, et cetera, and we'll do all of that. But this allows Stephen to, you know, put those applications through and get the ball rolling. Stephen, was there anything else that I forgot to?
Those are the major pieces.
Any questions, Jared?
Just a point of clarification, the CRF doesn't require a public hearing.
It does, and.
We expend from the CRF all the time, you're thinking of the contingency reserve fund.
No, I spoke with, Doug and I were looking at the statute and you have to have a public hearing. So I don't know if that's new or not, but Doug shared that with me. So going forward, we're gonna have public hearings on those things. So you'll note that the wrestling mat, et cetera, we're going to hold a public hearing when we want to get the money from the trustees. So we're gonna hold a public hearing on that. We gotta.
Okay, this is to get the money, not to expend the plan.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Thank you Jared.
But again, that's an error on my part and, you know, we, we wanna correct that going, you know, going forward. We've always posted it as part of our agendas, so nothing, you know, that's always been upfront. But I believe that, and Doug also believes that, we have to hold a, a noticed public hearing on it. So with that, I think there's a motion.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. In the proposed motion, you say Maple Lab and MVMS, but didn't you just say that year one would be MVMS?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about now, would be MVMS.
Along with Maple.
Yes.
Okay.
And then next year would be the high school.
Thank you Rheta. Go ahead Jared.
Assuming that this is approved and assuming that we get enough money to put in the $300,000 that was approved by the voters and the money that we have to take out for the fire panel, how much money would be left over with all of these appropriations?
So in the memo that I provided you, it'll be over $100,000 will be unallocated. So when I use the word unallocate, unallocated, we have allocated $50,000 for the last two years to replace the turf field, hoping to do so over a 10 or 12 year period so that when it does come time, the majority of that money, if not all of that, is, is available. So when, we will have over $200,000 in the CRF, but $100,000 is allocated for the turf field carpet replacement and that'll leave another $100,000, give or take, for doing one of these projects. So net would be $50,000 unallocated, but in reality, they'll be over $150,000.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you Jared. Any other questions or comments? Is anybody ready to do a motion? Go ahead Rheta.
I'll make a motion to authorize the IT director to proceed with the applications for two additional E-Rate funded projects to replace core switches, one at Maple Lab and the second, second project at MVMS.
Thank you Rheta, is there a second? By Jack. Any further discussion? Okay, see none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, opposed, abstaining. Did you guys vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we're unanimous, I didn't see your hands go up. All right, go ahead Scott.
All right, the next, the next topic, and you should have a memo from HR Director Kate McGrath in your packet, someone can nod, hopefully it's in there. All right, good. So every few years, I think it's every three years, Kate goes out to bid for vendors that provide life insurance and long-term disability insurance. So with that, the, that was, went out to bid, there were five different companies that returned their bids. That was Lincoln Financial, Hartford, MetLife, Standard and Unum. And there was certain criteria that needed to be met in terms of policy requirements. And I think with the exception of one of them, they all met those, those requirements. The other one was they had to assure us that they would maintain their rate for three years, they all did that. What you'll see on this sheet is, and you will also see this when you go to your SAU board meeting in April. And if anyone like watches New Boston meetings online, this is the same, it's the same for each entity. So this memo is gonna be going to New Boston on Wednesday and then the SAU board next month. You'll see that the current provider, Lincoln, was not the cheapest vendor out there. And, and there was a disparity of the, of one of the vendors of $7,000 was the low, it was the low bid. One of the complexities of doing any type of benefits work, and I think, I'm gonna read this out loud so that the board and the, and the public can hear it. Considering the administrative costs associated with changing carriers, I, which is our HR director, recommend that we continue our business with Lincoln. Changing carriers involves review and execution of contracts, review and distribution of new plan documents for the 18 different employee classifications, modification of benefit packets for each of those classes, new designation of beneficiary forms, and in parentheses, and possibly enrollment forms for all eligible employees and the filing of those enrollment forms. So there's a very significant administrative, you know, burden in terms of whenever you change carriers. We have had very good service and reliability from Lincoln as our life and LTD carrier. And it's Kate's recommendation and mine as well, that we proceed with awarding this to Lincoln, knowing that it is not the lowest of the bids.
Any questions or comments for Scott? Go ahead Laura, or Vanessa, sorry.
That's okay. We're new. When we say significant administrative costs, do we have an amount, like, are we talking a thousand? Are we talking 10,000? Is it easy to quantify?
I would think it would be in the thousands because you have to redo everything. And not only is it on her end, but it's also on the financial part of it as well. Because if, well, we'll talk about the, the check registers later, but all of those entries that say Lincoln Financial, we have to then change folks in, all of those have to get changed in our, our systems as well, across all three entities. So I would say it's in the thousands, not in the hundreds of dollars to do that. I can't tell you that it would be a 7,000, it's, it's a wash, that I could not say. But I would probably say it's about $3,000 to $5,000 worth of labor to do all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Easily.
Okay.
Thank you Vanessa. Anyone else? Are we ready to do a motion on the recommendation?
I'll do a motion to approve the Lincoln Financial as our life and long-term disability insurance carrier for a three-year period effective July 1 of 2025.
All right, thank you Caroline, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
By Shane. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, opposed, one abstent, or one opposition and abstaining. All right, so we have one no and then the rest yes.
She.
She said no.
Said no, but, oh, the other one said yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You're welcome. All right, moving on, legislation update.
Okay, I, I gave everyone, I hope, was a packet of the three bills that I'm going to be talking about. And it looks like this. So just as a recap, and Brian helped me on this one, but I think that there was over 260 education related bills in the current session in both the House and the Senate. And trying to keep track of all these bills would be any person's full-time job. We try as best we can in SAU 19 to keep track of some of the more challenging ones. And tonight I'm gonna be talking to you about three of those. It's not all of them, but it's three of the most pressing ones. And they're, none of them have been obviously approved by both the House and Senate, signed by the governor. So some of them have been approved by one body or the other, but we haven't hit crossover, which is when the House sends their bills to the Senate, Senate bill sends their bills to the House. So the first one that we're going to discuss is Senate Bill 297. And this deals with insurance risk pools. Couple of weeks ago, Kate and I went to the Senate hearing on this bill. And there are currently four insurance risk pools in the state of New Hampshire that provide both health, insurance, dental, as well as property and liability insurance for cities, towns and municipalities and school districts, all right? And they do so because it is considerably less expensive if you pool, if you belong to a pool versus if you go out onto the open market. And the other issue is that these vendors typically provide a whole lot more than just simply providing, let's say, property and liability insurance or health insurance. They provide a lot of training for us. In the case of, say, Primex, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk about cybersecurity and at the next part of this agenda, a ton in terms of assistance with cyber attacks and training, et cetera. This particular bill addressed the, the thought from the Secretary of State's office that there was not sufficient claim reserves by four, by four of the risk pools. Two of them, they felt were very significant risks. And that was Health Trust and InterLocal Trust. Primex and School Care, which is an organization that just provides health and dental to school districts only, they felt that those were very correctable in the short term. But they felt that Health Trust and InterLocal Trust had significant deficiencies in their claim reserves to pay, these are monies set aside to pay current and future claims. One of the reasons for this was that the state, the Secretary of State oversees these. And essentially, they hired an actuary, an actuary or an actuarial firm. They, basically they crunch a lot of data and they determine, you know, how much money might be needed for these current and future claims. Health Trust, in this particular case, they were given a range. And the actuaries, actuarial company from the state had a different assessment. So we have two actuaries who have two different opinions as to what those claim reserves should be. Somewhere between the two of them perhaps lies the truth. But with that, the state saw their actuarial report and said, wait a second, you have, you are significantly under-reserved. You don't have enough money in, set aside to pay these claims. And what they did is they proposed this legislation, Senate Bill 297. The issue with this is that they took it a step very, very, very too far. And with that, what they have done in this legislation is they have basically said that if there is a shortfall, which falls under the, the lower end of the claim reserve limit, every single school district in town has to have money set aside that would pretty much re, put money back into hit the minimum. Now, what, what maybe the Senate didn't care about, et cetera, was that Health Trust in particular, and I think InterLocal, they are corporations. Meaning that what, where it stands right now, we pay them a premium for, say, health and dental and then they are responsible for the claims. If something bad were to happen, they're our corporation and we are not on the hook. No school district or municipality that belongs to Health Trust would be on the hook. This Senate bill shifts that burden and that onus now to each town and school district that has Health Trust. And the bill requires that each school district in town that has Health Trust, and there's over 260 of those entities, they would have to set monies aside in a capital reserve fund. So this bill would require us, if it were to pass in, under Doug's tenure, we'd have to set up a capital reserve fund for 1% of the premiums as a, almost like a stabilization fund. This is very problematic from a number of fronts. And Brian and I talked about it the last week. So we have to set, there's a couple of things. One, you have to create a capital reserve fund, unless the voters don't approve that, one, then what? And then you have to put 1% in for four consecutive years. And that 1% is between 90 and $100,000. So we have to have probably a near four, about 400,000 in this CRF in case they were ever to hit below this certain capital reserve threshold. So again, what, what happens if they, if we, if we don't? What happens to like these monies if we were to decide that we go to another care, another insurance pool? A lot of these things were not, you know, addressed. I testified for, I testified at the hearing. And based upon my, my prior experience, I, I asked them, why didn't you consider like a guarantee fund where part of the premiums for all of them go in to a fund that in case any one of them. for all of them go in to a fund that in case any one of them goes, has financial issues, they can kind of tap into it? To give you, to give you an example, on, on the federal level, private pensions have a pension guarantee fund where premiums are taken, and then they fund it, and God forbid, a pension fund goes belly up, there's money to help, you know, fund those pensions of those people who paid into it. They didn't, you know, that's not, this thing has gotten really kind of rammed through. So that's one that will impact, not, not us, Town of Goffstown also is a Health Trust member, and I said, there's, there's a couple of hundred other towns. So that's one that we're going to follow. It passed the Senate, and now it's going to go on to the House. So any questions on that one? All right, gets better, though. So the next one is House Bill 147, and this one is an act relative to clarifying tax exemptions for properties used by religious, educational, and charitable organizations. This one was brought to my attention by Town Administrator Derek Horn in your, in the packet that I gave you. He is discussing this with the Select Board this evening. This pertains specifically to St. Anselm College, and if this bill were to become law, Mr. Horn stated that it would be a shifting of tax obligation from St. Anselm College to all other taxpayers in Goffstown. So with that, he would anticipate that the local school tax would increase by about fifteen cents for a, for the median home in Goffstown, which is four hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred dollars, they would see an increase of one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-four cents on their tax bill. If you have a home worth more than that, obviously it's more than a hundred and seven dollars. So, so this one here, and I gave you a copy, you know, of the bill, for those who don't know, there are certain buildings, let's say, at St. Anselm College that are taxed, others that are not taxed. This would shift, I think he said, thirty-five million dollars.
Thirty-five million.
Off their tax rolls and onto the tax rolls of everybody else in Goffstown. So again, that would be House Bill 147, I think, right? Yeah, 147, so.
What is the reason for bringing this forward?
That's always a great question, and one that you hardly ever get an answer to. So these, this was brought by, not people, I don't, I don't know if, I don't think St. Anselm, you know, brought this up, but there were certainly bill sponsors who, who brought it up. But if you, there is a great website that, and it's nonpartisan, it's called Fast Democracy, and you can type in the bills and it gives you all of, fastdemocracy.com, and you can put in whatever House Bill, Senate Bill for any state in the country, anything federal has all of that. It's pretty cool, and so you could go onto Fast Democracy, put in this House Bill, and it'll tell you who sponsored it, what's the status of the bill. It's a pretty good tool. And then the last one, which is certainly, I think, the most concerning, is House Bill 675, and this bill was interesting. It was a bill that dealt with excess, excess swept, which is the statewide property tax. That's money that's taxed locally, retained locally, and it's the state's means of saying that they provide for local education, for education. It then got amended twice, and now in its current state, and I tried, I put the different amendments in there, but it basically would institute a statewide tax cap on all school districts in the state of New Hampshire. So you'll recall last year in both, in, in Goffstown, there was a tax cap article on both the school and the town side. That tax cap article got amended at the deliberative session, which rendered it almost moot. But tax cap articles have been put on ballots, both town and, both municipal elections and school elections for the last two to three years, and for the most part, most of them have not succeeded. It's my understanding that all of the tax cap articles, this particular session, this last, last week, all failed. But this is a bill that would institute a statewide one, and, and here's how it would Basically, you would have your current year appropriation, so the budget passed, we have our current year appropriation. Next year, the appropriation can't be more of a, in terms of a percentage, than the average of the preceding five years. Actually, it's, it actually leapfrogs eighteen months, and then it, it's an average of, of that five-year period of time. And I looked at the bill, you know, today, I'm asking Doug to take a look at it, as well as other peers of mine across the state to try to understand it. But it uses the word appropriation, and the word appropriation is, includes all warrant articles, all, in my opinion. So if you have a teacher's contract, which we are going to have next year, what it means is that you could potentially hamstring your negotiations, because if you have to be under, let's just say it's a three percent cap, that means that your budget and that teacher contract and any other warrant articles, if you wanted to spend six hundred thousand dollars doing something, like, that's included, and you, in aggregate, they can't be more than three percent. So I will tell you that it's based upon the Bureau of Labor Statistics Northeast CPI, and you have the statute there, I, I welcome you to try to decipher it yourself, what it means. But what I'm trying to do is I'm going to have Doug, you know, try to decipher it, come up with what he thinks the impacts are. But basically, this would very much eliminate local control of schools and school budgets and school collective bargaining agreements, because it's basically saying that the state has said, nope, this is what it is, and it, it takes away our local control. If there are communities who want to spend more than that, the statute says that you need a two-thirds majority to override that tax cap. So you're, you would have to have over a sixty-six point six-seven voter approval on any of those measures to, for it to pass, which is a much larger hurdle than, you know, than a bond. A bond is sixty percent. So there's a lot of, this is, this is a challenging, a challenging one, and this is one that I would suggest that you pay very close attention to and, and talk to your community members about this. There's a lot of bills that, you know, have a, an impact on public schools. It's not my position, I can't do that, but I can, all I, all I can do is to make you aware of them, and then whether, any action that you take as a, as an individual or as an elected board, that's up to you, but I, I, I can't do that.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody have any questions, comments for Scott? Go ahead, Jack.
You said that the cap is figured by a five-year.
Yeah.
So that's the, the CPI of the five years total.
Correct, now.
And it would count, like, if we had to build an elementary school?
No.
Okay.
That's excluded, as you can see.
Okay.
Facility acquisition and construct, yeah, that's, that's, but one of the major, the other big part, Doug and I were talking about it, was last year, I think, in our budget, we had a very expensive out-of-district placement. Like, what do you do when that happens? The legislation, this legislation talks about the appropriation. The appropriation, as you know, when we talk about budgets, it's always general fund budget, next one is food service budget, not raised by taxation, and then your grants budget, not raised by taxation, all right? Only your general fund, for the most part, is raised by taxation. When we talk about that growth, that, that appropriation, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we got all this ESSER money. So the appropriation went up, right, by a lot, by two million dollars, but we also got corresponding revenue of two million dollars. So it was a wash on the tax rate piece. This doesn't speak to any of that. It base, so it would almost make it difficult to take that large grant, because if it pushes you over that hypothetical three percent, or whatever that cap is, so this, this thing is riddled with questions and problems. Again, it passed in the House on a one ninety to one eighty-five margin, so this, this did not pass by a lot of votes. So.
All right, thank you, Scott.
And again, if you want to know, you can go to that Fast Democracy, and you can also go on the state's website. So if you want to know how any of your elected officials in this town or any other town voted, you can go on that website, and it'll tell you how they voted on roll call votes.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments? Go ahead, oh, sorry, Brian.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Scott, let's make sure we follow up with the Select Board and see if they're taking any action on 675, the property tax one that impacts St. Anselm College. Let's, let's in particular watch that closely.
That's good.
Because thirty, thirty-five million shifting to the, the other side of the tax burden is a lot of money.
Yeah, so.
And that would have an impact on this other bill potentially, right?
They don't affect each other, yeah, there's, there's a lot, yeah.
All right, Scott, moving on to the Power School data breach.
Yeah, so it's not often that we get public comment, and then, then we get a chance to talk about it, because typically it's not a, it's not a give-and-take type of thing. But I, thank you, Nancy. I did, I did send an email to Nancy with regard to, you know, her inquiry to Mr. McBride. And first off, I, I think that our, whether it be our administrator, our administrators, I'm sure you as well, I don't want to speak for you, but like, this Power School cyber breach has, it's, it's not, it has been, it's an awful thing, and with that, anytime that anyone's information gets, you know, hacked by an outside entity, it's bad. And we're seeing it all too often with, I mean, I don't know about any of you, but I seem to be getting one of these every month from, whether it be Target or this company, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a nerve-wracking, I think, for all of us. In speaking with our IT Director, a couple of things that I want to make crystal clear to the Board and to the community is that there were no social security numbers that were part of this, and that, that we know. So that's a known thing. The other part of it is that when this happened, obviously as a SAU, we got together and we filed an insurance claim with Primex, because we do have coverage for anything that was maybe, any liability on, on our part. I can't discuss in public session some of those legal things, and in non-public session, as I was saying at our ANF meeting, we will discuss this in further detail, but I can't talk about the specifics.
This evening.
This evening, tonight, we're going to, we're going to talk about it. I can't speak publicly about some of these things because it is something that has, it's, it's legal advice, can't, can't chat, can't talk about a whole lot of that. But with that, when we hired this law, when this law firm was hired, and this law firm is representing other school districts and entities that were involved, they made it very clear to us that we could notify our current students and our current parents, you know, the parents of our current students, because we knew we had the, the accurate data. But in terms of students that had already graduated, in terms of the notification, their emails, that we did not have. And many of the emails that, that students have are specific to sau19.org, and then when they graduate, you know, that, they don't have that access anymore. It is Power School's responsibility to track those people down. And a little that I do know is that they, they did use some sort of an entity to obtain, they have to make a good faith effort, reasonable effort, to track down these staff members and, and parent and students of, who have already graduated. And with that, in terms of employing a company that will look through public databases, et cetera, to track them down, that's on them, that's not on the local school district. There were hundreds, if not thousands, of, of school districts all across, not only the United States, but it's a global thing, that used Power School, unfortunately. And so with that, again, no social security numbers, to the best of my knowledge, and Stephen, you're here and you can maybe help me with this, but there was a reference made to medical records, and I don't believe that is, it was, it was the name of a physician, I think might have been the only thing, potentially?
The field that was impacted were, were brief medical notes. It was not, the medic, the medical tables were not impacted at all.
Right.
So it was fields like IEP on file, on file, 504 on file, C-Nurse, it was that field that was impacted.
Right. So, so with that, one of the things that we were counseled was to let Power School do their notifications so that it would not jeopardize our legal rights as a school district, nor the rights of former students and staff to exercise their legal rights. So without going into too much on that one, and we can talk more, more in, in non-public on that. And then the, the issue of the age of majority, you know, et cetera, you know, it, it is our belief that when that student turns eighteen, that it is their response, it is, they're the legal owner, shall we say, and they would be the ones who would put forth a claim. And having read EHB, et cetera, there may need to be some, some level of cleanup on that or, or re, re-clarification there, but recognizing that to scrub someone's record, that you cannot then give transcripts later, there's certain things that when you're relinquishing quite a bit, if we were to, Mike, is that a fair enough assessment, Stephen?
So, there's two pieces. One, under federal law, once someone turns eighteen or enrolls in higher ed, the custody of records moves from the parent to that eligible child. So that, that's important fact, number one, and that's in the, the family, that's in FERPA.
FERPA.
So that is defined there under federal statute. So we have to follow along with that piece. As to your other piece, under state law, we are required to retain certain records permanently. Things like dates of attendance, names of who attended the school, those, those pieces we are required to store permanently, because the, it's state law, it's in the ED 50, whatever the ED 306 standard is, that specified the schools must retain certain records, and there's a whole plethora of what we have to keep. So we can't go through and say, after a period of time, we're going to delete something because state law says we have to keep it indefinitely.
So lastly, I wanted to share with the Board that we did put up a notice on our website with respect to this data breach, and basically to let current and past folks know that if they do get an email from three, I think it was three different Power School addresses, that it is legitimate, that there is an eight-hundred number that they can call, you know, for more information. And there's certain things that we'll discuss tonight in non-public that I can't discuss publicly, but I think we do owe updates to the community as to what is going on when we can, you know, do that. But, you know, Stephen and his team, and Doug, and other, myself, Doug, we have spent a lot of hours, you know, on this. It is a very important thing. We recognize that for the folks in our community and, and your family, it's very important. I, I have two kids myself who are impacted by this. So we will share the information as, as we get it, but it's, it's not going very, very fast.
Scott, we should also share that when the notification went out, we didn't know that that was happening.
Yeah, right. They didn't even tell us that.
Right. So Scott shared that his daughters were impacted, my sons were also impacted, who have long since graduated, so I didn't even know my own kids were impacted. So we weren't withholding information to anybody, we didn't know when they were going to be doing the notifying, and we didn't know who the impacted people were. We didn't get a list. That's not how it works.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, suffice to say that, you know, Yeah, so I, I think, you know, suffice to say that, you know, the information, data privacy, et cetera, is mission critical here at SAU nineteen and all school districts. It's just something that, I don't know if you read in the paper, Pelham got hacked, you know, over the weekend or last, late last week. So it's, it's a challenge, you know, and we'll try to our very best to, to keep the public informed, you know, as, as we learn more.
So Stephen, with regard to medical records, I know it was mentioned in public comment, but how long does the school keep medical records, like five oh fours, IEPs to the twenty-six?
So the five, I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you that we do not store five oh fours or IEPs in Power School.
Nothing.
All we store in there is a note saying that we, the child has one.
They have it.
And that's all that we store in Power School.
Okay.
So that's was pretty much the bulk of that field.
So no information.
Because it was a medical note field, not a medical field saying physician diagnosis, that type of things. Now, that said, there were a few notes in there from the bits and pieces I saw that may have said like EpiPen or a few of those other pieces that would be notified to the teacher that they, they needed to know for the child for a field trip type thing. But it was, we did not, it was not like the nurses' data of what they kept.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, questions, comments? Go ahead, Ms. Bean.
I'll just comment that Power School is trying to reach out because this past week I got emails to my son and to my daughter. I forwarded them to those, to them and they're getting two years of protection if they, if they elect to do so. So they are attempting to reach, right? So my son's twenty-seven, my daughter's twenty-one. They notified through the parent to get to them.
Right, thank you, Ms. Bean. Anything else to add to that, Scott?
No, that was it. And like I said, when we know more, we'll share that with not only you, but with the community at large.
Okay. All right, is everybody good? No other questions, comments? All right, so we'll move on to Budget Committee report, Jared?
No meetings have been held.
All right, perfect. C and E, Ginny.
Well, I'll try to bring us up a little bit with the report. From our last meeting, Sharif Salter, who is the Goffstown School Nurse, presented Who We Play For, which is a very interesting program for, for kids. And this is a nonprofit organization which provides affordable life-saving cardiac screenings for student athletes and performers. It's a sudden cardiac arrest program that is, sudden cardiac arrest is a leading cause of death in young athletes, which is often due to undiagnosed cardiac conditions. Having a program at GH, GHS would offer students essential heart screenings which help prevent potential tragedies. And these sorts of screenings are not usually done on kids unless it's something that's a major thing that's caught at a very young age. They're not done until adults usually. And we've heard a lot of situations of kids that have been in either a practice or an athletic event that have been outdoing their best and abducted dead on the field. And this is something that would, these screenings would catch that problem before that kind of thing happened. The school is looking to pilot this program, this optional program for families at the end of summer or next fall. And additional information will be coming. And I think it's a good program. It's a new program that's starting. There's a couple of other schools in the state that are starting it. It's an actual opt-in program and they'll be getting more information. The committee did think it was a good idea, but I think if we're getting more information at our next meeting, we can hold on to any recommendations, though we did have a consensus to recommend that at that meeting.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about it, just because we talked about it?
Go ahead, Jack.
I would be for that because I, I would be for that because I did have that when I coached here.
You do?
And then the parents were encouraging me, you know, we think he's just lazy, push him harder. And then we had an episode when he was bench pressing, went in and they found the heart defect and I was like, oh, you weren't encouraging me to kill your child.
Yeah. As a nurse, I am too, because I know that these things aren't, they aren't, those screenings aren't done for kids.
Until they're something like that.
And, you know, some of these kids just really work their bodies hard as athletes and, and they have no clue until it's, it's too late, so. We also had a technology update with Stephen. We had, new computers were installed at the GHS Music Lab, which updated workstations and audio equipment. Two additional laptop carts, each with twenty-five touchscreen HP laptops and a wireless printer were added to MVMS, increasing the total to thirteen. And what makes me sad is at MVMS, when they have testing, which is an awful lot of time of the year, all of the laptops are taken offline and there were no laptops for the entire school to use. So all of those, was it, how many weeks was it, Steve?
Six.
Six weeks?
Oh, and it's, at Mountain View in particular, it's every grade.
Yes.
Every grade level.
So all of those grades in different timeframes use the computers and the laptops and nobody else in the school has a laptop to use. So we were discussing at different times how you really need to use a laptop correctly in order, to be efficient with the laptop, to be able to do your tests, your standard testing. And kids don't have access to them very often because of the amount of testing that's done and the low amount of laptops we have. So just a note for whenever laptop discussions come up to buy more, it's, it's a huge issue. Cybersecurity improvements included new Wi-Fi security through ClearPass, multi-factor factor authentication for staff and upgrades to physical security systems like panic alarms and security cameras. And number three, digital learning and AI integration. Schoology continues to serve as a digital learning hub for students, parents and staff in providing a one-stop platform for curricular tools. New AI applications including Microscope, Microsoft, Copilot, School AI and Flexi have been introduced to support content creation, tutoring and student engagement. Future projects, our upcoming projects include a new firewall for DHS, staff laptop lease refresh and enhanced five oh four management tools. And we'll be talking about the handbooks later.
Okay.
Any questions?
Next meeting?
Um, are we doing it next meeting? It's later on in the program. Or do you want me to talk about it now?
No, no, your next meeting for C and E. When is your next? When's your next meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. We will be meeting again April fourteenth at seven, seven PM at the SAU.
Perfect. Thank you, Ginny. Any questions for Ginny on what she told us? All right, moving on, P and C, Reta?
Yes, P and C hasn't met for a couple or for a month, but we will be meeting on April, April, P and C on the seventh at six PM. And that's just prior to, to this meeting. I did just want to take an opportunity also to remind everyone, especially with having some new members, that the New Hampshire School Board Association puts on a number of webinars that are freely available to us because we subscribe to them. And there's some interesting ones coming up, including navigating the three oh six rules, which actually is TBD, I don't, I'm not sure why they're waiting, right to know law, and this is in three separate parts. The annual new board member orientation, so you get a local one, but the, the one at the state is also very interesting. Most of these are webinars, effective school board meetings for school board chairs and other members, special ed law, basics of collective bargaining, among others. So that comes out in a regular email, so they, again, they're, they're free. If you miss them, you can watch the recordings.
All right. Thank you, Reta. All right, policy review, Shane.
Policy is not met, but we will have policies on second read or Q and A coming up later on tonight. The committee will be meeting with at least one new member because Mr. Clutier has retired from public service for the time being.
Right.
So the committee will be meeting on April fourteenth at five thirty PM at the SAU office, actually two new members, I think, we'll need a new boss in person as well.
Yeah, Belinda's off too, yeah. All right, thank you, Shane. All right, Technology Committee, Jack or Reta?
Um, I've, I've got the minutes, Jack. You okay if I give you the presentation? Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'll do it. So we had the presentation at C and E, so a lot of it overlaps. I'll try to capture things that weren't presented there. There, a number of projects were completed, the phone project, all buildings have been completed. There are a couple of things that need to be finished up there, but they're done in the buildings. The fiber optic upgrade at GHS, Wi-Fi bridging for the rear parking lot. And MSA, we already talked about the Mulder, multi-factor authentication. Nearing completion are the, the laptop carts, the telephone connection for the press box up back at the turf field with PA system and the Wi-Fi bridging. And we continue to go through a list of a number of resources, there are third-party products that are up for renewal and need to pass the security review. Some have passed and we're moving on, others that don't pass, they have, I believe, a year, one year, two years to get caught up.
Poor Stephen.
So the way our data governance plan is written is if a product is under active negotiation with the attorneys to meet the state and federal requirements, we, I think we have a year. If a product is not renewed, we have until the end of the current school year with it before it has to be replaced. We have a couple of products that do fall into that, they're good until June category and they're good until June unless we get notified that they violated the data privacy agreement, which then all access is done.
Okay. You're all set?
Yep, that's it.
If I could just add one thing.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen.
At C and E, I, I share with the C and E group that superintendent asked me to do a, I would call it a mini inform, IT department process review. And I interviewed the IT director as, and all of his staff over the last, I don't know, two to, about a month, I, I've done this, probably thirty to forty hours of, of interviews. I've got a couple of non-IT folks that I want to speak to that are kind of on the periphery and I hope to then write the report and then present it to the superintendent. Really what we were looking at was, you know, pretty much everything in, in the IT department, from staffing to projects. Stephen gave me access to their ticketing system, he gave me access to a lot of things. His project lists, which are many. And my hope is that I will share that with the superintendent and at some point down the road, you know, maybe it's the retreat or sooner than that.
It'll, yeah, it'll be sooner than that, Scott. The board may recall that I'm recommending some staffing increases for next year for the IT department. You heard tonight about cybersecurity issues. Our IT department is not overstaffed. That may be shocking for all of you to hear that we don't have too many IT folks, so it will be sooner rather than later.
All right, Reta, when are you having your meeting again?
We'll be meeting May seventh at four PM. I think that may be pending who's on, on the committee.
On the committee?
If that's going to work.
Okay.
I'd just like to add one more thing.
Yeah.
Because both the, the Tech Committee and C and E got the full presentation. I don't think that has been shared out with the board. I'm not sure that it's necessary to print it out for all of us, but it'd be great if it were available, if anyone wanted to go and see, you know, all the details. Stephen did a great job of, you know, including all of that information.
That's great, thank you. Any questions, comments for Reta? All right, moving on to Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I wanted to follow up with the board. The board will recall, we had an evening scheduled where our state reps and our state senator was going to come. That ended up getting canceled. So I have heard from Representative Alexander, he's looking to reschedule, so I wanted to inquire with the board if that's something that you'd like me to be scheduling, to have our state reps and/or our state senator come. In the email, when Joe had, I think, emailed the whole board, I think, it wasn't just, I don't think it was just the chair, but they had looked, they were looking at an off-cycle meeting. So he was looking for not a typical Monday evening, but something off-cycle. So I don't know if that's something you'd like to discuss now, you'd, you'd like to think about it, but if this is something that you'd like me to do, just given the complexity of getting in touch with all of them and getting it scheduled and coordinated, I'd like to get going if it's the board's pleasure for us to do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Brian, like, I think it has to happen sooner rather than later because they are going to be voting on like very key pieces of legislation. I scratched the surface with these three, there's probably another twenty-five that, you know, impact schools, that it would be nice to let, at least share with, with them, like what those concerns are. I mean, that House Bill six that, that one I just mentioned about the statewide tax cap that passed the House, so they've already voted on it, our reps have already voted, but Senator Murphy has not yet voted on it. And then conversely, the other Senate bill hasn't hit the House yet. So I, I think having this in the net, over the net, sometime over the next two to three weeks is like mission critical, if we, if we want to express an opinion, if the board wants to express an opinion.
Well, it was mentioned on a, for a Tuesday night in the email. Go ahead, Reta.
Um, I agree too that we should be having this sooner than later. I'd also like to recommend that if we're going to do this off-cycle, that we do put it on TV, that it's recorded, just because I think this is important information, affects the schools and the towns as well, so at least making that available for others to listen in on.
Right, I agree. So what are we thinking, what's, what's the Tuesday coming up? We're in March. April first is the first Tuesday of April. We have a meeting April seventh. Who would want to do it the day after a meeting? April eighth? April first, what's everybody's thoughts?
Honestly, I think going, seeing how fast legislation is moving.
Mm-hmm.
I would, I think April first or April eighth as two options would be the way to go. I only say that because bills are being amended in the House like that same day and then they're getting voted on three days later. And I mean, there were some of these bills that didn't even know about and I'm, and I'm, I try to keep myself pretty informed, but they're moving rapidly.
Is there a preference to the board, one day better than the other?
The first for me.
The first.
The first, yeah.
The first seems to be the consensus, so maybe reach out to see if the first.
Okay.
At what time? Seven, six? What do you think, Jared?
I think it should be a Monday when we're already in session.
I know.
That's my opinion.
I do too.
I agree.
If one of them can't come, I mean, if we have to change our schedules, because I know I won't be attending on a Tuesday.
Okay.
I have other obligations.
Isn't April fifth a holiday?
April fifth.
Another Friday holiday.
No, I agree with you, Jared.
But I mean, is this one person can't come or is this five people can't come? So that's my opinion of it.
And remember, this is an invitation from the board. So you're, you're welcome to invite them whenever you want.
So April seventh is our next board meeting.
You want April seventh?
Oh, sorry, Reta.
No, I just wanted to add that they were recommending not being on one of our meeting nights because they wanted to give us enough time. So, you know, it, that was a convenience thing, so they may not be against doing a Monday night. We would just have to maybe lighten up the agenda.
Which we would purposely do.
Right.
Yeah.
So could, could we do it on like the twenty-fourth on a Monday or are they like against Mondays?
Twenty-fourth of what?
The twenty-fourth of what, March, next Monday? We don't have a school board meeting.
No.
Oh, yeah. Our next school board meeting is April seventh. Right, is that what you're talking about?
No, I meant like the twenty-fourth of. No, I meant, like, the twenty-fourth of March.
That's next week.
So next Monday?
Yeah.
Maybe it's too soon.
That might be too soon.
I like the April seventh.
Seventh.
May I ask, what about the thirty-first?
Of March.
You're going three weeks out, and I'm just seeing how things are going fast here.
Well, but in fairness, Scott, the bills that have been voted on, did anyone call you?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
On one.
No one's called me. I don't know if anyone's reached out to the school board or to other school board members.
Well, that's amazing, yeah.
We're certainly available to provide input on these bills. There are, when you say hundreds, there are hundreds of bills.
And I, I get that. I just think that the board has to be proactive on this. I understand, but I think if.
So a special meeting on the thirty-first for the state reps? 'Cause we don't have a scheduled school board meeting on the thirty-first. Or on the seventh? What is everybody's consensus?
I could reach out to them tomorrow for the thirty-first. That's less than two weeks' notice, but it's pretty close. And, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. We, we're, we're here to serve the board. So if the board wants that meeting, we'll have it whenever you wanna have it. I just have no idea what people's availability is.
What does everybody think?
I'm, I'm available on the thirty-first.
Thirty-first works for me.
So if the thirty-first doesn't work for the state reps, then it would be the seventh as a follow-up? Does that work? Okay.
Okay. I will shoot for those. I'll try to get an answer tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll try to let the board know as soon as we possibly can.
Okay. And then if it's the thirty-first, what time? Seven?
Six.
Six?
Six.
'Cause there's no scheduled board meeting. So six?
I think six is fine.
But seven on the seventh?
Yes, that's the board target.
If it's on a regular board, it should be the regular board time.
Yep, okay.
Otherwise, it'll confuse people.
Are teachers and students able to come?
Absolutely.
Probably welcome.
Yep.
Go ahead, Rheta.
Just as a reminder, the New Hampshire School Board Association also does legislative updates, which are really helpful because there are so many. They're tagging the ones that, that they think their constituents might be interested in, so it's a good place to begin.
Yep. All right, so thirty-first at six, or the seventh at seven? And if it's the seventh, then we'll keep a void agenda?
Yep, for sure. The only thing I would, again, reiterate to the board, I shared this previously, that I don't see this as a meeting for me to come in and have pages of questions for our state reps. So I plan on taking a support role to all of you, so they can all have comfort that I'm not gonna beat anyone up over school funding, although I'm available to do that.
So have questions ready.
Particularly by appointment.
All right, so go ahead.
Just a few more things. We had a little bit of an update on the March eleventh Professional Development Day, but I wanted to provide a few more highlights. We had work around building safety, building safety teams. We had discussions and vertical alignment on building thinking classrooms. We had ongoing work for our standards-based report cards. We had work around instructional rounds, and we had presentations at Mountain View on differentiated instruction. Speaking of Mountain View, and Mr. Loring is here this evening to talk about the generator project, but over the vacation week, the night locks were installed at Mountain View. Staff have all been trained, and we've already done a drill incorporating the new locks into our lockdown procedures. So that is all done, already taken care of. The board will recall that originally, the Citizens Petition Warren article came with a free installation of the devices. That, of course, has not happened. At this point, we're working on some pricing for the remaining buildings, but I did wanna just share with the board that that is not being done without a cost to us. So more information can be shared in a future non-public with respect to that. We had a DOE.
Hang on a second. Go ahead, Rheta.
Can I, I, I just listened to what you said, and it was covered for Mountain View, but not for the other schools.
Correct. Mountain View was done. There was no cost to the district for the installation of Mountain View, but the other buildings are not free of charge. Thank you for clarifying.
Thanks, Rheta.
Had a DOE call today, and Commissioner Ettleblow shared with superintendents that he'll be finishing the school year and will be then moving on. This was in the news yesterday, so we'd, we'd already heard this, or last week maybe. But interestingly, the New Hampshire Education Department shared that they know very little about what's happening in Washington. So at this point, they're kind of finding out a lot of information through the news, just like we are. They tried to give school districts their assurances that they don't know of any reductions to some of the federal entitlement programs, like Title I, Title II, IDEA. But at this point, they believe that federal programs are what's called forward-funded, so they don't know if there could be future impacts, but at this point, they're just not really sure. So we'll have to pay attention and continue to watch what's happening with that, but more to come. And lastly, we offer, we do a little local new school board member orientation, so I'd like to welcome our two new board members, as well as our new board member from New Boston. We'll reach out to you. I was actually thinking, Mrs. Moore, that we might be able to do it on the night of the SAU board meeting, to have them come a little early, but we'll let you know, 'cause we, we'd like to give you a little bit of an orientation to the SAU, who provides support for, for what services and what departments, and a little more information when we meet with you. And that's all I have tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, myself, Mr. Gross.
Go ahead, Scott.
No, I had a favor to ask the chair. I have two community members that are here to talk about an agenda item that's lower down. I think it will take less than five minutes. It has to do with the JV softball field, and I think, I would ask if we can maybe accommodate them, if we, if you're so inclined.
So, Scott, this is new business.
So are you done?
I'm done.
Does anybody have any questions for Brian? Comments? Okay. So we're gonna, you're welcome. Thank you, Brian. All right, so on new business, JV softball field improvements, you have a memo in here, Scott?
Yeah, and if I would, I would like to invite, you know, Ryan and Adam, if you, if there's any questions for you, if you don't mind coming up. I'll summarize everything for you. So in your packet, very quickly, these two gentlemen represent the Goffstown Youth Softball League.
Hi, welcome.
And they approached, they contacted me about a week ago, asking for permission to do work on the girls' JV softball field behind the high school. Basically, it's the infield material. The infield material is in not good shape. Obviously, if you play any type of baseball or softball, getting a bad hop is not a good thing. Also, sometimes poses a safety issue in terms of if you have bigger pebbles and things like that. So both Adam and Ryan want, their organization wants to spend upwards of sixteen, thirteen thousand dollars to remove the current materials and to replace them with more suitable materials. They wanted to do this over the next couple of weeks before the season begins. They were asking for a fee waiver. They do pay field usage on fields that they use, and essentially, this would be a waiver to be determined, because depending upon how much time that they use, it would be something that I and Doug would just simply come up with a modest agreement with them. But I didn't feel comfortable, neither did the superintendent, doing anything that was more than a year out. So that's why, you know, we're here. But I wanna thank them, first of all, for, you know, for, for doing this. It's not often that we get a community organization that's looking to help us take care of our fields, et cetera. There's a ton of volunteerism in Goffstown, and I wanna thank you two gentlemen, you know, for that. I wasn't sure if the board had any questions for them.
Anybody? Questions?
So there's no.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So there's no upfront cost to the district?
No.
It would just be a credit based on future use?
Yeah, and I contact, I spoke with Ryan Cowett, our athletic director, he's well aware of it. Talked to Randy and Dawn about it as well. It's kind of a win-win scenario for both their organization and our community and the school district.
How long do you think it's, Scott?
How long will it take to do?
No. How long of a?
Two years, probably.
Two years.
That's what I, probably right on the air. They rent our fields for the youth softball. They also use our gymnasium for some clinics, so that's something that we can, you know, kind of iron out, but I just didn't, because of it was thirteen thousand dollars, I didn't, something that I thought the board should be aware of.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely. So any questions, comments, motions?
I'll make the motion to authorize the business administrator to execute an agreement for the Goffstown Youth Softball League for a multi-year fee waiver under policy KF-R in exchange for thirteen thousand dollars in improvements to the GHS Junior Varsity Field as presented.
Is there a second? By Ginny? All right, so in our motion, it says sixteen thousand, but it's thirteen thousand on the memo? Okay. Just wanna make sure we have the right numbers.
Yep, sorry about that.
That's okay. Any other comments? All right, go ahead, Ginny.
Thank you for doing that. That's, that's the rating.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
And it's different material, right, Adam?
Yes, it's a specific infield material that's for, Vanessa knows.
Yep.
Actually, I help out Goffstown Youth Baseball as well, with their fields. It's specific for the field. Currently, what's out there is a sand, rock, whatever they put down when they originally built it. And this is specific for a softball field.
Was under the sod when they first put it down. And that whole area was blasted through tritonic and sod. I just happen to know.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, student, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Have a good season.
And you guys can go home. All right, so going back to old business, the high school generator project. Randy, do you wanna come up?
So Mr. Loring, our facilities director is gonna come up. I'll provide a little bit of information. Randy's here really to be able to answer any questions that the board has about the specifics of the program. I wanted to begin with my vision. So it has long been my vision to have a fully functioning emergency generator at this school that powers the entire building. This would allow us to move our emergency shelter from Mountain View Middle School to Goffstown High School. There are a number of reasons why we would wanna do that. Number one, this facility uses power, loses power less frequently than Mountain View does. There are multiple roads in and out of Goffstown High School. The Mountain View generator doesn't power the entire school, including much of the cafeteria. So there are a number of reasons that we think changing the emergency shelter is a good thing. Mr. Borget, all of his IT equipment, he has a data hub here that controls many functionalities across all of our schools. So also, from an IT perspective, having a fully functioning generator here is a good thing. My, my vision kind of continues from there, though. Our generator from Mountain View is original, so it is still working. We've had it overhauled a number of times. It powers about a third of the building. Randy, would you say that's probably fair? It does not power the entire building. I would like to replace the generator with a new generator that powers the entire building at Mountain View. That would be the next phase. And then the third phase, and actually, phase three might make sense to do before the Mountain View one, which is to procure a large generator that is on a trailer, that we could pull back and forth between Bartlett, Maple Ave, Glen Lake, and the SAU. So we would, with the high school generator, a revamped generator at Mountain View, and then a pull-behind generator, we would be able to have coverage at all of our schools. That's kind of been what my vision has been all along. We continue to get more extreme weather, so in all likelihood, this is a good thing for the future of the school district. And this particular grant, this is the most coveted grant. So we have been able to apply for other grants through the Hazard Mitigation Program from FEMA that have been fifty percent matching. Well, this is the big daddy that is seventy-five, twenty-five. So the last time this was available, unfortunately, the town applied for a small generator project, which made us ineligible to apply for it. But Chief Murray has been fantastic. He has worked with his partners up at Homeland Security, and we have the application completely filled out, ready to go. You do have a memo from me on the project that gives the high-level overview, which is, this is a four-hundred kilowatt generator at the high school. It would be diesel-fired. We also looked at propane, but Randy is recommending diesel, and he can tell you why in just a minute. The total cost of the project is estimated to be just under five hundred thousand dollars at four hundred eighty-seven, eight fifty-nine. The seventy-five percent match of that would be three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four that we would get from the feds, with our local match of a hundred and twenty-one thousand. And I do want the board to realize that that can include time, labor, and materials. So as we get closer to this project, if we get selected for the project, because we haven't been picked yet, but if we were to get selected, and let's say the Department of Public Works came out and did some clearing for us, we can use all of their time, their staff time, their cost of their equipment, any materials that they would use can all go towards that hundred and twenty-one thousand local contribution. Mr. Loring, high-level overview of the project, what this, you know, four-hundred kilowatt generator would be able to do, what it would look like, any of the logistics?
Let's say, as you said, we, we did look at propane, but the amount of volume it would take to run a propane generator of this size would be enormous, would have to add to the propane field to support it. So made a decision to move away from it, and with the folks that came out and looked at this project with me, had suggested that we, we moved and stay with a diesel-fired generator. I said, we've waited eight years for this to come up, 'cause we, we look at it every time. I said, but there are a number of components, as, as things and, and policies have changed as it relates to an emergency shelter. So there are components in this that weren't in past components, like, for example, the generator's gonna sit out to the side of room T seven. It sits down in a, in a, kind of in the valley of that piece right there, on the other side of the lines of the propane field as they come across the road. So they'll be outside of that. It will sit there, they will excavate to the building and send the power feed over the top of the building to the generator room, that's where the power room, where the big transfer switches are in the middle of the building. It'd be the easiest, most direct route to get to them. The transfer switches would be on the inside of that room on a wall where we have some racks. We would move those racks. What is something that is new to this that I found out was, you have to have a backup to the backup. So on the outside of the building, there will be a transfer switch to speak or to say that will have connections, so if something should happen to this generator, we could back another generator up to the building, take power leads and plug them into, to switch onto the building, and continue to run the building. So there are those components of it that are in this as well. This is a turnkey project, where the folks that are installing the generator will do all the excavation work and the actual connection of the generator, working with the folks from Eversource, which I did reach out to, to start a ticket on this, to make sure that we knew what their needs were for something like this to happen. So right now, we, we filled out all the paperwork of it, and right now, we're just looking to get the board's commitment to the twenty-five percent to make us eligible to submit the paperwork.
Thank you, Randy. Questions, comments from the board?
I should, I should, I mentioned this in the A and F, you know, Jared had brought it up, like, how are we going to fund it? So, I contacted our legal counsel. So, just, there are three sources, potential sources, and I will share with you, only one is viable at this point. So, the first one, you'd say, "Oh, could you use the capital reserve fund?" The answer to that is no, because it's not an existing capital asset, and that's not how, when the capital reserve fund was set up initially, you cannot use that. The one that I thought that we would be able to use would be the current budget or a future budget, doing a budget transfer. And our attorney said that that was not permissible based upon his reading of the statute, which deals with the acceptance of unanticipated monies, because in this particular case, we're getting this grant, and he did not believe that we could use it, use of those funds. So, that leaves the 5%.
Hold on, there's one more fund.
Oh, yeah.
This is the one I wanted.
You wanted. I apologize. That's right. Then there was impact fees. And that, you know, I read through the impact fee statute, and I talked to our town administrator, talked to our attorney, and none of us felt that was a viable route either. Impact fees are for an expansion of current facilities. It would be a stretch to say that this would be an expansion. So, that's out. And then the last one was the contingency fund, the contingency, and that one, our attorney had recommended. So, if we were successful in getting this grant, we got to keep our fingers crossed. Wear many, many St. Patrick's Day hats and pray for luck. Then, we would then hold a public hearing. Obviously, we do not have to consult with the Budget Committee due to a change in law. I have already contacted the Budget Committee Chair about this, and I would certainly notify them of our intent to proceed. We're not holding, we're not, everything is transparent here. Hold those public hearings, and you could expend from those contingency, that fund, it's not a separate fund. It's a balance sheet item, but yes, you could expend those dollars.
Jerry, did you have your hand up?
I know, just scratching my head, but I agree with the superintendent, if you ask me.
Sorry? At the corner of my eye, I saw your hand up.
I believe that this is an expansion of services, because we are adding to the electrical system of our school. That's my opinion. I'd prefer impact fees being used for this versus the risk reserve.
I agree. You can't do it. Based upon the reading of the statute, it is expansion of the facility due to the extra development, and it can't.
According to our agenda, we have a number of developments that are coming in, so I'm just saying, you know.
We sure do have a number of developments coming in.
That's why you hire attorneys.
Are there any other questions, comments? There is a motion, at least to start moving forward with this.
Yeah, so there's a couple of motions. So, first of all, if you authorize, we need your authorization to move forward. So, this would be motion number five on the big motion list. And then, if you're so inclined to do five, we would be looking for number six as well. Scott, isn't number seven a repeat of number five?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't put that on.
Okay, so it's just the two.
Okay. Yeah, again, I wasn't sure if you wanted six or seven. So, Brian, seven was the one that you had drafted initially, so I think that's why we put that on there. So, I apologize. Five and seven are similar.
All right. So, does everybody want to do? Go ahead, Shane.
So, just to clarify, so we would be authorizing you to apply for the grant?
Correct.
Okay. And then, we would need to be chosen for the grant?
We would then have to be chosen for the grant. Then, there would have to be funding available for the grant. So, another factor in all of this is, we've all likely seen in the news that federal funding is being limited. So, I have no idea what the potential impact of that would mean. I know that this one doesn't come up very often, and when it comes up, we've wanted, I mean, I've been talking about this for a long time, because it's been.
Eight years.
It's painful for me to remember that it was eight years, but it's been that long.
Yep. And I know, I've heard you talk about it for at least four years now.
Yep.
So, we could potentially authorize you to apply for this grant, and then we could either not get it or there could be some funding deficiency, and this could kind of go away.
Yeah. So, I would say, I think I want to be optimistic but realistic that I have no idea if we'll get picked. And it could take months and months and months to even hear anything back. So, we really don't know. I would, again, extend my appreciation to Fire Chief Sean Murray. He has been fantastic through this. I'm sure Mr. Loring would support that, that the chief has submitted all the paperwork. He has tons of contacts up at Homeland Security. He used to work up there, so he's got, you know, a lot of colleagues that he knows, and I think, as hopeful as we can be, you know, I think we're a good project. And my last comment is that I am in support of this, so thank you.
Thank you, Shane. So, do you want to do a motion, Shane?
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Laura, go ahead.
So, if we did get the grant, there would be a public hearing before we could use the contingency fund, is that right?
Is that how we would do it, Mr. Gross?
Yep. We have to by statute.
So, that would give the public the opportunity to come, and again, I think people need to remember that this is a $500,000 project, and we're looking at 365,000 in local federal money. So, if we could get that for Goffstown, that's a great thing.
Anyone else? All right, go ahead, Shane.
All right. I motion to authorize the SAU and Emergency Management Director to apply for the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant for the Goffstown High School Emergency Generator Project with the local 25% cost not to exceed $121,964.98, the local cost to be funded through the 5% contingency fund.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? By Ginny, I see. Sorry, by Ginny. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, opposed, abstaining, we are unanimous.
Thank you.
And then, do you want us to do six, or you?
It's probably just as well to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I would maybe make the argument that signing the letter is contingent upon five, but yeah, it's probably fine to do it.
Okay. So, you want to do number six?
I will motion to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign the Emergency Generator Meetings and Service Assurance Letter for the GHS Generator Grant Application and to forward said letter to the Goffstown Fire Chief for the Town of Goffstown Hazard Mitigation Grant Application.
Seconded by Jack.
I assume that's seconded by.
Yeah, I was like, "Will you stop?" And then, seconded by Jack. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, opposed, abstaining, we are unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, moving on.
Thanks, Randy. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Randy. Have a good night. All right, parent, student handbook. Ginny?
Yes. You had the handbook sent to you several weeks ago to look over, and basically, you weren't tell a whole lot of changes to them. They were grammatical or word choice changes. A couple of things that I'd like to point out is, we put in writing the procedures already in place at Glen Lake, Maple, Bartlett, and Mountain View regarding visitor access. We've had a little bit of problem with this, even though it's a policy. So, we put it in the handbooks just to make sure that it's written and people see it. And that includes a requirement for identification before gaining entry to the school for meetings or to volunteer, and that's just showing your license before you enter the school for any reason. So, that's just been put into the handbook so that people are aware of that, even though it has been usual and customary up until this point. The other thing is safety updates for walkers and bikers at Mountain View. The handbook now includes updated safety procedures for students walking or biking to school. To enhance the safety, they will no longer use the main driveway where two-way traffic poses a risk. They'll be going down the other way, down the stairs, and going down the busway instead. The second one is improving the functionality and accessibility of the handbook. The table of contents will now be interactive, following families to click on a page number and be taken directly to the relevant section. The entire document will be ADA compliant, ensuring accessibility for all users. So, it'll be much more easy, much easier, excuse me, much easier to use for everybody when accessing it by computer. Does anybody have any questions about the handbooks? Yes?
This is a general question, Ginny. Were there discussions during the handbook development about how things might need to change in the future based on the new N306 rules? I don't know if there were any changes for this year, but I know there will likely be changes coming.
Well, certainly for the course offerings, Ginny, C and E discussed the logic and rhetoric, some of those. So, the current seventh-grade students, when they, when that graduating class gets to ninth grade, there will absolutely need to be changes pursuant to the graduation changes.
The class of twenty, was it thirty? Was it thirty?
Yes.
Current seventh graders.
Yep.
So.
In every year, we change and add to the book and revise the course selection.
So, yes.
This is something that every year.
Good, yeah.
The guidance and the teachers go over all the courses, you know, make changes to wording sometimes, because I know some of the instructors this year looked at the wording and thought, you know, this could be explained better so the kids really understand what they're taking. So, some of that work was done to make it more interesting to, you know.
Yeah, I know in my work, we've been looking at how we're going to have to change ours. So, I assume that there was some foresight from our people in Goffstown as well, so I'm glad to hear that. That's at least on the radar.
Right, right.
Thank you, Ginny.
That is all. Thank you.
All right, Shane. Anyone else?
Anything else?
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Jared.
Thank you, Ginny, for the update. I just want to make a observation. If I remember reading it, we're not necessarily required to present our ID in order to gain access to a building. I believe it did say that if you don't have an ID, you would just be escorted by somebody in the building as well. So, for those members that may not have an ID, they still would be able to be a guest in our school, according to the handbook.
Yeah, we, if a parent didn't have an ID for whatever reason, we would absolutely make any accommodation we had to for that parent. Absolutely, Jared.
But they are putting it in the book now, so people will bring their IDs.
Well, no, I did read that in the book.
Or you're saying if somebody doesn't have an ID.
Yeah. They don't have the ID to show that they can still be allowed in the schools. I believe I did read that in the handbook, if I read it correctly.
Thank you, Jared.
We discussed that. Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so you need, so you recommend.
This has been.
It's been a long time.
It came to, yeah, it's been a long time, and we really need to do it, because now is the time for kids to be looking at these. And they need to go to the printer. So, we did come to a consensus at the board, and we want to go through with this. So, we need a vote tonight, if you would please.
So, number eight, if anybody, unless somebody has any questions. Go ahead, Reta.
I do want to just comment that Vanessa and Laura probably don't even have this in front of them.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you'll have to trust us.
Yeah, I was emailed a while ago. All right, go ahead, Caroline.
I will motion to approve the GHS student handbook as presented.
Do I have a second? By Reta. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, student, opposed, abstaining. Okay. Laurie, did you?
I voted yes.
Yes. Okay, so I have all yeses but one abstention. Did you get all that? You're so good, Denise.
This should be for all the handbooks, not just GHS.
I'm sorry.
I was going to ask a question.
I was wondering once I said it.
Yeah, it says GHS student.
I will amend my motion to approve all the handbooks in the school district.
All the handbooks. Reta, do you?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and, all right, so we have now for all the handbooks. All right, so let's do another vote. So, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Oh, I already got teacher, students, and one abstention, so it's the same exact. Thank you. All right, Shane, policies.
All right. So, we have a number of policies that we had a first read on from our last meeting. But before we pop through each one and ask their questions, I'd like to have us jump to policy ACN. If we look at policy ACN under letter C, the first line was, I believe the correct term is stricken. Is that correct? From the first read policy we had. That was a suggestion by one of the committee members. We did hear from Ms. McGrath that it would be prudent of us to add that sentence back in, because there will be a new law coming effective July 2025, which is RSA 275, code 78, which will require us to have that in there. So, we can do two things. We can either send this back to policy and redo the whole thing, or we can add that sentence back in if the board's amenable to it, and then move forward for approval next meeting. So, it's up to the pleasure of the board.
So, it's going to be in the law anyway, and we're going to have to put it in.
Yeah.
See, amend it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, everyone's okay with us?
Yeah, I would also add, since our last policy meeting on ACA, we've received a little more guidance that we need to change ACA as well.
Okay.
Right, Mrs. Moran?
ACA-C.
Is it ACA-C, or was it ACA?
Oh, ACA-C is the one we didn't do first.
Yeah, we haven't done that.
So, we, that one's not in the queue, never mind. So, we're good on that.
All right, so ACN, we're going to put that sentence back.
Yeah, is everyone's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. All right. Does anyone have any questions on ACA after first read? Seeing none. Any questions on ACE after first read? And Laura and Vanessa, I know you guys might not have read through these yet, so.
Not yet, Shane. There's a lot.
You've had them for five minutes.
We don't vote on them tonight.
I know you guys are quick readers, but, yeah. These will come up again at a future meeting.
All right. ACN, we are all okay with adding that sentence back in under letter C. You guys are doing good tonight. I love this.
Yeah.
CBI and CBIR, which is a superintendent evaluation form. Again, that's just changing the timeline to the June 30th.
Go ahead, Reta.
I'm going to ruin this streak.
Come on, Reta.
Only because I had to go through this. So, one, first, I have a question of moving it later. Don't we have to, and let's take Brian out of this. I'm just talking about the superintendent role. But don't we consider their payment, their salary prior to, I mean, we wouldn't want to do the evaluation after we have.
Yep, which is April, right?
Right.
Usually, we do contracts.
So, it just doesn't, from an HR perspective, that doesn't make sense, that we would make a decision about salary and then do the evaluation. So, I'm wondering if you want to consider that.
So, I think we could find a happy medium where it's not, you know, January, but it's not also June 30th. So, I think we could find some middle ground there. I don't know if there are a lot of thoughts.
Some, maybe by the end of March is hard because of elections.
I think what is hard is elections.
Yeah. Yeah, look great.
Could maybe give it some thought and talk about it at the SAU meeting as well?
Because it would need to be consistent with the SAU policy.
And New Boston.
And New Boston, yeah. So.
And again, this is just from my own experience. Then, the other piece, and I'm not sure that I see this in here. So, one of the things with the SA, the SAU Board Chair is the one that delivers the evaluation. And I'm not sure what we do with these evaluations. I have one sitting in my house that says confidential, which I don't feel comfortable with. So, the SAU Chair of that year has it. And then, if you're going to do that evaluation every year, it's compared to what? You don't know what it was the last time, because it's always rotating. Again, Brian, this is not anything to do with you, but just as a general process. And I did talk to Kate McGrath quite a bit about this. It's like, what do I do with this? And how does the next chair, how does the next board really know how well the superintendent did the time before and what were the recommendations of changes? I don't have an answer. I just want to bring this up, because I want to get rid of that evaluation sitting in my house.
I can report that the evaluation I did when I was the SAU 19 Chair, I shredded. So, that, I don't have that anymore.
I will shred it.
So, we keep a copy. It goes into my file. So, it's. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, that, should that be, I mean, should that be stated in the policy?
That's our current practice.
Yeah. Because at least there's some record of it. And I don't think it's required. The last time I talked with you, you did it because you wanted to, but I'm not sure that it's required. Anyways, I'm just bringing this up for the policy to think about, to be really clear for whoever it is that delivers the evaluation.
So, I mean, we could send this back to policy. We do have some time, because we've done Brian's valuation for this year.
Yeah.
So, we could move this back to policy if we want to do a little more digging on it. It sounds like there might be more than just changing the date based on, you know, if you want to add in, what happens to the, and things like that. So.
And then, maybe talk about SAU policy.
Right, right, because it'll have to align with New Boston and SAU anyway.
Yep.
So, does everyone in agreement that we send CBI and CBIR back to policy?
Yep.
And then, apart from that, at the next board meeting, these will be up, all of them except for CBI and CBIR will be up for adoption by the full board.
Okay. Thank you, Shane.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right, new business. So, talking about SAU Board Meeting. So, SAU Board Meeting is Goffstown and New Boston meet together at least three times a year at the SAU, and we discuss the SAU stuff. So, we're thinking April 10. Is that what we're thinking?
Yep.
At what time?
Six. We do six, right?
Six, okay. Does that work? Or let Denise know if it doesn't work.
Okay, we're also going to float that to New Boston on Wednesday night.
Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay.
What was the date?
April 10, 6 o'clock at the SAU.
It's a Thursday.
Thank you.
So, the next part on the agenda, I'm sure a lot of people have been asking about this, is the school calendar for next year.
Yeah, so what you will see here, everyone should have a draft copy of the calendar, and I'll try and I'll try to describe it to folks at home. So the first thing I would share is this is 181 school days. So the Board will recall, a standard school year is 180 days. In the Goffstown School District, we actually have 181 school days. So this represents an extra instructional day. This coming school year, FY '26, there will not be elections in the month of September. So that only occurs on gubernatorial cycles. So this year, we will not have a primary nor a general election in the fall. So you'll see this year, for this proposed calendar, we have three teacher workshop days and then students starting after Labor Day weekend. So kids would start on the 2nd of September, which is a Tuesday, and the teachers would have three teacher workshop days prior. Now, one thing I want to share with the Board, an astute Board member might say, Brian, I thought your contract only allowed you to start the last three business days of August. That is correct. I proposed to the Goffstown Education Association, instead of doing the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, to do the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday instead and give teachers that longer weekend, so that Friday off. So the Goffstown Education Association has agreed to that, so this calendar represents that. So my interpretation is, I can only do this with GEA's blessing, which they have given. They agree that they like the idea of the longer weekend. So a couple of other highlights on this calendar, we continue to have Columbus Day listed on the calendar, as well as Martin Luther King Day in January. We have Veterans Day in November. Now, this is one that the Board can weigh in on, December vacation. So you'll see the way that I did this. Christmas is on, let's see, 22, 23, 24, 25. So Christmas is the 25th. A lot of school districts are not having any classes that whole week. So some are doing this. I think most people don't have that time off, so my interpretation is, we hold school on Monday, Tuesday. Tuesday would be an early release, as we typically do before Christmas Vacation. But I will share that I know some school districts are not having any classes on the 22nd or the 23rd. I think most people don't have those days off and don't get that much vacation time. So that's the reason you have the calendar in front of you that you have. We, of course, avoided Massachusetts School Vacation Week in February. Nobody wants to ski with them. And then same thing in April, nobody wants to go to Florida when they're there. So we try to avoid all Massachusetts Vacation Weeks.
So am I reading this right? The Wednesday before Thanksgiving is now a full day off, instead of an early release?
Yep.
Am I reading that right?
That's what it says.
Okay.
Is that how we did it?
Yeah, you did it.
Which I agree with.
I think Mrs. Moran might have snuck that past the goalkeeper there.
Well, I figure since there's not a lot of voting days.
Did I say I was being nice?
Yes.
You were trying.
It's like, that's what everyone does now.
Yeah.
We're in the rarity, so I will quietly tell you that I track the attendance rates on that day. They're actually pretty good, surprisingly. Families that are going to travel, they're going to travel. And my thinking was, that's exactly what will happen on the 22nd and 23rd. If someone's going to go away, and you're going to go pack up the car and go see grandma, you're going to do it anyhow.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
From a learning perspective, on the 23rd, early release, why? Because it cuts a class, it cuts the last period off at the high school.
Yeah, so that's typically been something that the Board has supported, to give an early release day before Christmas Vacation. So that actually hasn't been a superintendent one. That's been something the Board has done historically.
Go ahead, Shane.
I actually agree with Mrs. Bean, that I don't love the early release, the day before.
If it was on the 24th, I could 100% understand that.
Well, I'm going back to what you just said, Brian, in that if people are going to travel, they're going to leave, they're going to do it anyway. So, so you want the 23rd to be a full school day? That's just me. I mean, I don't want to speak to the entire Board.
To that point, I think it's maybe for the families, it becomes more disruptive, that it's a half-day, early release, and, you know, it's not like they're taking off, it's just another day. But I don't have kids in school anymore, so. Anyone that has kids, if you.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah, please send them Monday and Tuesday to school, is my weigh-in.
I don't care about.
That was my sentiment on behalf of parents.
Thank you so much for that.
Yeah, I think parents are going to want their kids in school.
Yeah. I don't care if it's a full day, though. Yeah, because people are going to leave, they're going to leave anyways, or take their kids out early if they have to catch a flight or leave. So it's, just leave it, whole day.
This past year was a very long break.
Yes.
In the first few days leading up to, and granted, I think that this is like kind of a moot point, but it was hard for, I think, the kids and just that additional time being out. And granted, I feel for the teachers. I know that leading up to the holiday, not good. I get that. But the structure that they get from school is extremely helpful, that I think kind of helps them significantly.
All right, so does anybody want to change the 23rd, leave as is, think about it?
Well, if we think about it, where does that land?
I'd love to make it a full day.
So let's just make it a full day.
So the 23rd?
Yeah, so the 23rd becomes a.
I don't know if Jared can.
I'd love to hear from our student rep if I want to weigh in.
You can't ask kids on this. I mean, I'll put Brady McCann on the spot. Is it possible that Brady McCann could be a, you know, an appropriate responder on this?
Nope. I say, take the day off.
Now we're going back. This is what happened, what happened.
You get the student choice and voice, and this is what happens.
Choice is overrated.
Go ahead, Rheta.
Just to clarify again for the new Board members, we vote on this, New Boston has to vote on it as well.
Yep. And we don't always vote on it the same night we get it.
Right.
So it's up to everybody. Sometimes we wait until, are they getting this Wednesday?
The only thing is, this is really late.
Where we vote.
Well, let's socialize this. Has the community seen this? Let's see if there's any community input.
And then wait to see what New Boston says.
Unless it's something that we have to do right now, Brian.
No.
I can, I think that this is rather late, myself.
Well, they changed the goalposts. So they, last year, we had to have it, last year felt late. When do we have to have it into them this year?
They didn't give us a deadline, but then I heard a couple of weeks ago that they absolutely wanted it in for April.
Well, they don't get it until the Board's approval, so.
I think it's fair to show it to the Boston before making it. First, and they'll see it Wednesday?
They'll see it Wednesday. So you want to hold off and vote at your meeting on April 7?
Seven. Yeah, go ahead, Rheta.
Could you include that we're considering, you know, we are thinking about making the 23rd?
I would just tell you, we're just going to do it. So if the general consensus of the Board is, because I'm going to redo the calendar, so the 23rd will become a regular school day. I'm going to go back on, you know what, I'll hold on the Thanksgiving. Leave Thanksgiving, we'll see how it goes.
And that doesn't change the ending date, as long as there's no.
Yeah, it doesn't change the, so the ending date would still be an early release on June 18th. So that would be our, that would be our last day of school with no snow days.
That's all depending on you, Brian.
Yep. All right, so is everybody good on this?
No pressure.
Everybody's.
No, I miss them.
So everybody's good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so this will go to New Boston and then come back to us April 7.
Sounds good.
All right, perfect. All right, we already did the football. All right, so development update, Scott.
All right, I provided you with.
Great handout.
A handout on the numerous housing developments that are either in the planning board, already being constructed. So I'm just going to kind of go through them. I mentioned it earlier at the Admin and Finance Committee meeting. So we've got, you know, quite a few. So there's a, there's one in the planning process, Acorn Drive Extension. That is in the Grassmere section of Goffstown, and it links up the Spice neighborhood with Tibbetts Hill Road. And those are 40, the plan is for 46 single-family homes that are three to four bedrooms. If you recall, when Mark Fugier gave some estimates as to the amount, the number of students that would come from single-family homes, it was 1.64.
So that's school-aged children.
School-aged children. Seventy-five roughly students from that development. And as Caroline mentioned, that would be one bus. So just, Esker Meadow is a relatively new project going before the planning board. That is on New Boston Road. The plan there is to build 26 duplexes, so there would be obviously a total of 52 total units. Those would be two- and three-bedroom units. Because they are those duplexes or townhouses, those are 0.44 student, potential students. So that would bring us to roughly 23 there.
Where is that, Scott?
What?
Where is that on New Boston Road?
It's the Heathfield property.
Where?
The Heathfield property.
The Heathfield property.
Just past Farm Store, former.
There are some issues, it's in a, parts of it's in a flood plain, but.
Yeah, it's got some Conservation Commission issues to achieve.
Okay.
The next one is on Mass Road near the Sunoco Station. That one is named Park Place, not next to Boardwalk by any stretch. But those are townhouses, three-bedroom townhouses, 30 of them. And again, that could yield 13 or more students.
So Scott, we should just comment briefly. The Mark Fugier, school-aged children, he has a different count for residential houses and apartments or duplexes. So you'll see, that's that coefficient of 1.64 versus 0.44. The 0.44 primarily came from the development in Pennardville that's by the drugstore.
Abington Square.
Okay, that was the one that primarily developed that 0.44. So if that fluctuates, those coefficients change, the number of school-aged children goes up.
Mm-hmm.
Or down.
So that Park Place is in planning status. The next one, Dearborn Village, that is approved already and construction has begun. That's at the corner of 114 and 114A. I forgot to put that A in there, Daines Park. Those are townhouses, two to three-bedroom units. And again, that could yield 11 or more students. Woodland Village, you're familiar with that one. That's the one off of Bog Road. Those are largely completed, and Jared had shared that some of the COs are starting on those. So some of the certificates of occupancy have started on those. Those are 74 townhouse slash apartments, and they are one to two bedrooms, and there are some studios involved. So that could be 33 or more kids out of that one. And then lastly, Riverview Park, this is one that you've been seeing in the newspaper. It is currently before the Zoning Board of Adjustment. That is for 34 single-family homes, again, three to four bedrooms. That's on the Riverview Park neighborhood on the Manchester Town Line, and that could yield up to 56 students. And I found out there's another one off, which I found, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Another one?
Yeah. Rainbow Drive, there's another one that there's, they're going through the, it's like, they have a review process before it hits the planning board. So, yeah, that's off of.
How many units?
Normand, is that what you said, Vanessa?
Normand, yeah.
I don't know. It's not as big as the other ones. It's a smaller development. But I don't have any specifics on that. It's a technical review, I think. So this, so with that all told, I mean, it's over 211 students. We never know where they're going to, what age groups they will be. I mean, we have capacity at Mountain View and the high school, Bartlett a little bit, so, but not Maple. That's a big issue for us. Glenlake has a little bit of capacity, not a ton. But that's where, that's where we are. But I thought this, I think we talk about this a lot, is like, when you look at it.
It was good to put it all on one sheet, Scott.
Yeah, it was getting confusing.
And obviously, we're no closer on full-day kindergarten. We are now down to, I believe, three communities in the entire state that don't have full-day kindergarten.
Passed in Bedford and Lunedary.
Passed in Bedford, didn't pass in Lunedary. Lunedary missed it because they had a nine-plus million-dollar bond, and they didn't get the 60%. So they were a little shy.
I think they got like 55, something like that.
Yep. And Bedford only got it by 13. I think he told me 13 votes, it was really close. I think they did a recount, or they're maybe doing a recount. I guess it already happened. But so, these are the challenges that we will continue to have. When we have enrollment increases as a function of these developments, I hope that the community will remember all of these that were approved. Because when I come to you and say, we need to add teachers, we need to add more.
Buses.
Buses, more portable classrooms, more special education staff, whatever it may be, it's because of these.
Rheta, go ahead. Do, can you refresh my memory about the impact fees and whether those will come into play with all of these new developments, or is it?
Oh, they absolutely will, unless the planning board does some kind of, you know, negotiation to waive those fees, which I think they have the ability to do. But yes, all of these, we would expect would be subject to impact fees. So that's, that's good that there will be a little corresponding revenue. But the immediacy of needing classrooms and buses and additional supports and services will have an immediate cost to us. And again, the only likelihood that we would have for full-day kindergarten is through decreased enrollment. I can't imagine that we're going to put an addition on the Glen Lake School. I can't imagine that we're going to approve a tens of millions-of-dollar bond to do full-day kindergarten. I just don't see it happening. So unfortunately for us, full-day kindergarten will continue to be elusive as long as development continues to happen.
Go ahead, Rheta.
And just as a follow-up, you know, this is, I think it just hits home how this isn't just a school issue right now, it's a town issue. And I think it's going to be important that those conversations happen, that, you know, maybe at the planning board, I don't know if the, you know, we can speak at that, or have the superintendent speak at that to remind them. Because this is, this is getting to be big, or bigger.
And that's still two big pieces of property that are out there. And so, can I ask an unrelated question?
Go ahead, Jack.
Yeah, well, it's not unrelated, but I hear little birds every once in a while around town. If that one on New Boston Road goes through, and New Boston had the capacity, but Goffstown didn't, would there be a possibility to tuition students into New Boston?
So that's a conversation that the Goffstown Board could certainly have with the New Boston School Board. They've had decreasing enrollment in the last couple of years, so in all likelihood, they probably have space, if that's something. So when we talk at the April Board, the SAU Board meeting, we'll talk about whether a June area meeting is needed. This might be a reason to have that meeting jacked, because there could be a formal discussion of some kind of additional tuition agreement, if that wanted to be something that this Board was considering. Might be a good retreat agenda item as well for this Board to consider. But yeah, I mean.
I didn't know if there was legality about it around it, that couldn't be overcome, or if it was all.
No, I think you could have a separate, you could have a tuition agreement with New Boston to send kids there, just like they could have a separate tuition agreement if they wanted to send fifth graders to Goffstown or sixth graders to Goffstown.
Just be an MOU.
Yep, it would be like an MOU, in addition to the area.
So I know we mentioned the school impact fees, which is a one-time fee, correct?
Correct.
It's not a reoccurring every year. So yes, you get a little bit of money to help from the one time. But then, it's, this is a very long-term financial impact that essentially falls on us.
Hundred percent.
As taxpayers, and then we have to figure out other issues, you know, building capacity and whatnot, all the things that you've already mentioned, Brian. But, and then I think, Rheta, to your point around the school and the town talking, it's a budget impact on our schools, but then long-term for the town, too. Our town infrastructure cannot handle this many new structures and individuals. We already have learned that our police force is down significantly, the hiring is down. We just approved increased salaries for people who are already paid much lower, and we can't retain staff very well. So, yeah, I think that, to your point, that is a very good approach to have, because we can't just look at it as the only impact on our schools.
Thank you, Caroline. Go ahead, Jenny. To, along those lines, too, is if we have a tax cap on schools and town, and we get like 200 extra children.
Yep.
How do you even fit that into a tax cap? How do you even fit that into a tax cap formula? I mean, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And I wonder if those representatives and senators have even thought of, do they need to look at a paper like this and think, geez McCrow, what on earth is a tax cap going to do to two hundred kids going into a town? As far as the town itself and the infrastructure, but also a school that has no room for them? And need extra teachers, need all of those things that cost money that's not going to fit into a tax cap of budgets that go past five years, that go back five years. I mean, it's crazy, in my opinion. Yeah.
Thank you Jenny.
Excuse me.
No, you're fine.
Any other comments? I think this was just a heads up, so you'll just keep us.
Would, would the board like us, either myself or Mr. Gross and I, to go to the planning board and to bring this hand out and to share with them, just to be, you know, I don't want to be anti-growth, and I recognize that Goffstown wants to continue to grow as a community. And there's, there's great parcels of land to still do some building here, but holy cow, they need to understand the impact on the school district.
I gotta speak up here. So I will do whatever this board directs me to do, but I believe you are the elected officials. You should be going to these planning board meetings. I really do. I'll do it, and I have. I've written the letters on your behalf, but you are the elected officials, and I personally think that you carry a lot of voice in this community. So I'll do it, but I just think you should be there.
Good Jenny. Are there, can you even get around now? Because I know there's a bunch of new laws that have been put into place about stopping, you can't stop growth really in your communities. Because I know some communities, they, where they wanted their town to stay like a cute little town, and the state's overridden that. I mean, can you stop growth in a town?
I certainly wouldn't claim to be an expert on the planning board and zoning boards.
But if there's not a real reason to say, you know, no, this is.
Yeah, I, I think that they can, they can look at throttling it down a little bit. I think that you can slow the growth a little bit, but I think even just to make the board aware that this is what this potentially means for the school board. They just need to be aware that there's a real impact on all these kids coming in.
And I definitely think they need to be like really strict with the impact fees. Like you wanna.
Oh, I would agree. And remember, we haven't even gotten any of these developments. So that Woodland Village, that hasn't even opened yet. So we don't even know how many kids that's going to be.
Jared, you had your hand up.
Just a reminder to the board, we actually have attended two of these meetings on this list.
You did?
Well, we did, because I was appointed by the board to do that. They don't have public comment like we do.
Yeah, that's right. I remember saying that.
And so we have to go at a certain time, at a certain meeting, to talk about a certain item. We cannot just go to the next planning board meeting to discuss it.
It has to be on the agenda, right?
It has to be. It's very limited on what they allow us to talk about. But the important thing is, we have shared with them our school-age children ratios. We have shared with them two of those projects, one of them being the Bog Road, the one behind the Shell Station. I know, because I attended it. We are, I mean, we are engaged as much as we can be. And if we want to continue to do that, I'm all for it. But what has happened in the past is, we present our information, and their developer does their own study with a different ratio, that we don't know where the information came from. And they present it as their own and their facts. So, yeah, again, I, I love doing that. Most of you know I love getting in front of other people. And I continue to do it unless somebody else wants to, but I'm not sure it's really going to help us. The important thing is, if it does happen, that we do get a registered impact fees for it.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, I got two hands. Shane, go ahead.
And we can always send emails as well, outside of these, these meetings. You know, you can always email the board members, the planning board members and let them know.
Yep.
Was it?
It's true.
So, that's probably what my plan will be.
Right. Rheta?
Just, it, it's, I guess I want to say that it's, I'm not against growth. It just, it's to the point that it is the whole town, and if we can't go to the boards and speak up, it's still the whole town's issue. If we're talking about fire in school and, you know, roads, you know, we're not going to take care of roads this year. I mean, all of that comes into play, so it's not just one board. And that's what I'm hoping is, you know, somehow the leaders can get together and say, you know, have some sort of conversation and maybe some consensus about what's the vision for Goffstown, because taxes are just going to go up if it's.
Yeah.
Just looking at how we pay for all these things.
Right. Go ahead Jack.
It's truly, right, because how do you do it? It's either a moratorium on building permits or a selected number of building permits per year. Or zoning regulations, but when you get into that, we've already allowed, like on the mill development, to break three zoning requirements. Building too close to the water, the height restriction, the density regulation. And so once you do that, then every builder uses that as leverage.
Right.
In their legal argument for why you have to allow me to do this. That's why, like Dunbarton, has been able to stay less developed, because they're five-acre zoning, they never let it be broken outside of the village district. But Goffstown has already allowed these things to happen, you know, so I look at it at a rate like when Lamson Apartments gets a little older, and he says, I want to have a four-story building, you let them have a four-story building. Why can't I have a four-story building? And that's how it just escalates.
Go ahead Jenny.
Do they still have a two-acre lot limit in Goffstown?
Yep, but the exceptions are the open space developments.
Yep, and there's a, open space is another thing. It's a great thing for conservation land and for animal passage and for stuff like that. But when I allow the twenty houses to be built on one mile of road, as compared, as compared to the twenty houses being built on five miles of road, then those twenty houses get built in a one-year timeframe instead of a four-year timeframe. It does save the town money on the other side, because there's less roads to repair and take over. But as far as the impact to the town, it comes much faster, in my opinion.
Okay. The next meeting for Acorn Drive at Planning Board is the twenty-seventh of March. So if you did want to email, Shane is correct.
No, Jack, you've nominated yourself.
All right. So we've discussed this quite a bit. We're just gonna keep watching. Do we want Jared to go to, or have someone know a point?
I think he has. He's done it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I mean, I have no problem going, speaking as my individual capacity, like we all do.
Yeah, if you want to do that.
Yeah, it's just that way to, I actually represent the school board on this particular issue, because they voted me to do it, so.
Okay.
I think if the rest of us have concerns, if we reach out in some way, shape, or form, that's.
Yep.
The best we can do, you know.
All right, so the, March twenty-seventh. All right, so moving on, because we still got quite a bit here. So the citizen petition warrant article passed, and you have in our pamphlets here, we have a packet of what Scott and Doug came up with, what it would look like on the website. There's no check numbers. It just breaks it down. So we need to decide if this is what we're okay with. The warrant article was advisory, but it's up to us if we want to approve it or not. Go ahead Shane.
So I think that the voters spoke.
Yep.
They want this to be posted, which I am okay with. But my concern moved going into this was the disclosure of names on this, and that continues to be a concern of mine. As I looked through this briefly, and I saw about twenty names on here.
Yep.
That's a problem for me. So either we'll be able to redact the names. I know it's a pain, so that would be a problem.
So over the February school vacation week, I played, Doug and I played around with this. And as you mentioned in the A and F meeting, basically it's the creation of an Excel macro or shortcut where it does, it automates it. But to go and then redact, that's a completely different story. And as a matter of fact, what we did do in the automation, we just took out away the memo. So if somebody's listed on there, I don't know if we paid them as a reimbursement for mileage. I don't know, like, it, it, no one's really going to know that. So, yeah, the name is on there, but it is public information. So if somebody were to ask for it, I would have to disclose that anyway.
Yeah. I just worry about the student who is homeless and, you know, the family's receiving mileage. And, you know, the community at home might not know that.
I would just say mileage. I wouldn't.
No, I know, but.
Yeah, I don't know if it's mileage that, whether it be a special ed situation where we were paying for mileage, or homeless paying for mileage, or.
But that's my, you're kind of making my point though, because anytime someone's getting mileage, it's for something that they're being identified for. Like homelessness, special ed, et cetera. So that's my concern with it. The people voted for it, so.
Well, I will also say that there are teachers that we pay mileage for and coaches that we pay mileage for. So those are all things that we pay, you know, smaller amounts for. But that's your, I wanted to at least demonstrate to you that in the spirit of the outcome of the election, even before I did it, that it can be done. I think we automated to a point where it is not onerous in terms of the administrative time to do what you have right here. To redact, completely different story. Then it, then it does become much more time-consuming.
And that was why I opposed this initially.
So this is, Scott, just a Excel spreadsheet.
Is it? It's an Excel, so the, the actual register itself, the check register is something that folks who are on the admin finance committee, they get that. So we create like a multi-tabbed.
A mega spreadsheet.
You got it.
Yep.
And this would just create one more tab where the system would automate, where it would take that payment register.
Sure.
Delete the check number, delete the memo line, delete a few things, and then set it up to create a PDF, which you're seeing in front of you.
Okay.
And then it's just a matter of then creating the PDF and then putting the PDF on the website, which is not too hard to do.
Correct. My question is, I guess, before you make the PDF, while it's still an Excel spreadsheet form, could we just blank out the cells instead of redacting in a PDF? Could we just go through, it is a manual task, but they are asking for it.
Right, well, and I think what I shared with the board when this was being deliberated is that, and then there'll be another thing and another thing.
True.
Like right now, like, again, not to, you know, bemoan things from the business office perspective, but every single time that we add another process, it's enough, oh, it's half an hour here, half an hour there, and then it'll be New Boston, and then this. So, and before you know it, it's like three more hours a month. And so it's, those are the types of things. So I've been, you know, obviously, we will do whatever this board wants us to do, to comply. We will do that. But recognize that this is the shortcut, easy version. And then to redact requires, then is it Doug or myself going through, oh, is that a coach's name? Is that okay? Is it not, like, I don't, like, I don't know every single one of these, to be candid with you. And there's a lot of individual names that are legit payments for something. I don't know. I have to go through every single one?
I believe they're all legit payments.
I don't mean that. I'm talking about like, is it a mileage thing for a student or homeless? Or is it just like, hey, we paid an individual because they are a, somebody who assigns referees, you know, that we pay.
Sure. So Jenny had her hand up. Go ahead Jenny. Yeah, I'm really concerned about this, because we're, we're paying teachers, we're paying people who get stipends. Their name is going to be on that, and not a reason that they're getting a check, right?
That would be accurate, because we're not putting the memo line.
So are we going to get right-to-know questions, or are people going to be bugging those people? Because, oh my god, they got like seventeen checks. Why are they getting all of those checks? And are we putting people that work for us in danger? Because now all of these people know the people that are getting checks from us, that are going to be digging into their personal lives then to find out why they're getting money from the district. I really don't like this. Especially having relatives in the school district. I think it's very unsafe. We get right-to-know questions about everything all the time in all kinds of crazy detail. And I just think that we're putting our employees at risk.
I would like to add for the benefit of our new board members and those who are watching on TV now, that the check, the check, the manifest summary, which we went over this evening, those are now separate on the website. So if you go to the SAU Info tab of the website, it is now listed separately. So before, they were part of the minutes that Denise produces, they were incorporated in it. Now I have put those up separately. There's another folder for expense and revenue reports. There's another folder for our annual financial statements through our independent auditor. So all this stuff is very transparent. I will also say for, so that the public knows, is that the town of Goffstown, as far as I know, did not have any type of check manifest summary. The check manifest summary and Brian, I mean, this has been going on for well before I was here, so probably ten, fifteen years that you've had this. And as I mentioned to the newer members this evening, I think it was like, I have it in front of me here. So of the latest one, of a one-point, one million eight-hundred-seven-thousand-dollar manifest, one million seven-hundred-forty-four-thousand dollars of that was listed on this manifest summary sheet. Because it's everything over five thousand dollars. Another one, of the one prior to that, it's a three-million-dollar one, two million nine-hundred-fourteen-thousand was on this manifest summary sheet. So we have been transparent and disclosing, you know, to that argument. So it's, I don't know, and now it's, it's much easier to see. So I did take those actions without board approval, because we were already producing it.
Go ahead Rheta.
Yeah, going back to somebody manually redacting, I would be concerned about that, because if you skip, you miss one and you put it out there, then it becomes a liability, because it slipped your mind, or it didn't.
And I have done that in the past, even with this, this form, where I made a mistake and I put a parent's name on here for mileage. I did that by mistake.
So, so that's one concern, but I'm wondering if, a couple of things. We've made the warrant art, I mean, not the warrant articles. We've made the, the manifest more accessible. I'm wondering if we could also add a line for the total of anything under five K, so we get the complete picture. And could we make this register available by request? When asked by the public during the deliberative, there were two requests to know in the last year. This is not something that a lot of.
That's correct.
People are looking.
And they were from Florida.
So, so it's, it, the other thing is, I think that warrant article was very confusing. They, people weren't sure what they're voting on, and there was no description underneath that said everything we're saying tonight. So, you know, would it be in the same, the same like, we're trying to put it out there, we always put it out there. They just maybe weren't aware of it. And then keep the check register, if somebody really wants to see it, we can make it quickly and avail, you know, quickly available to them without, without, you know, all the detail being put on the website for somebody from Florida to request.
Caroline?
So I do agree with all of the opposition. I like the changes that you've made to the website, adding everything a little bit more easily accessible. I appreciate the efforts you've gone through to make this, you know, the best way we could by putting it out there for the public to see. But I think that in addition to some of the concerns about people's names, there are some families who are, you know, have gotten out of a bad situation, might need transportation support or something else, where they're getting paid. A simple search on Google can reveal their name, and then somebody could easily locate them a little bit more so than they had been able to. I would hate for that one incident to occur for one student, one family, because of this being posted. I would hate for that one incident to occur for one student, one family, because of this being posted. And so I think that just in addition to all of the other concerns, that, you know, we could be putting people at risk.
Thank you, Caroline. Laura, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I agree with the safety concern with the names. And I was just curious, Rheta, with what you were describing, would somebody need to submit a right-to-know request for that to happen? And like, what are the costs associated with that? If, if there were, you know, if this were to be available by request, what would that look like?
And, and if I can just answer, the, the person who put this forward said that, you know, "We're trying to save you time, so when people ask, you know, through right-to-know, they want to see it, they wouldn't have to call you up and waste your time." Um, but I don't think that's, that's really been true, because people haven't been asking for this. You know, maybe now everyone's gonna start asking for it, but, um, but anyways, the, the request, I think Brian can probably speak to that better, what happens with a, you know, the right-to-know.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so if somebody asked, submitted a right-to-know request, this would be an easy one, because it's already developed. So it would, um, basically be, I would be replying, and I would be providing the PDF to that person. Very often, right-to-know requests are, um, labor-intensive, that it requires a lot of people to do a lot of unearthing, and then reviewing records and seeing what's, um, what's part of the data set. This would be a very easy one. Part of me says, "We have the lowest K-12 cost in the entire state. I don't know what anyone thinks they're gonna somehow read in the manifest, and they're gonna come in with some kind of a sweeping financial recommendation for us. I, I just don't, I don't know what people think they're gonna get out of this." I think anytime we're gonna start redacting, it's a slippery slope. Because who's gonna do the redacting? Who has, I do all the redacting for right-to-know requests. Um, and sometimes that involves attorneys. So is it gonna be, is it gonna be the BA? What if he misses one? Um, what if there's something that is redacted that maybe shouldn't be redacted? So there's a lot to consider here. Um, one thing I would share is, I don't think you need to make any kind of a decision this evening. Mr. Gross gave you a look at, this is what something like this could look like. Um, remember, the, uh, the citizens petition warrant article is advisory only. You don't have to do it if you don't want to. I would tend to be in the camp that this is what the voters asked for, so I think it's probably, um, an important thing for us to do. But you don't have to make a decision on it tonight. And in all likelihood, this would start for the next fiscal year anyhow. So it would, um, start as of July 1, would be my take, that for FY '26, we'll start doing this. Anything else, Scott?
No, it's Doug's problem, that's why I'm. Only kidding. But, um, yeah, I think, I just, I just, I concur with what you said, Brian. Like, the redacting is, that's why I didn't do that, because it's, it's a lot of effort, and there's so much room for error there.
So what does everybody want to do? Because we've talked about this a lot. Uh, it's getting late, we still have non-public. Do we wanna make a decision tonight? Do we wanna think about it? Go ahead, Shane.
So, um, my preference would be to maybe make a decision in the next meeting.
Sure.
Because I'm pretty much in the boat with what Brian said. I can't get on people for voting for a tax cap when communities voted against tax cap, and then have people in our community vote for this, and then say no to it. So I need to figure how I can reconcile this. But I'd like a little more time to think about it.
So everybody concur? So it'll come back next board meeting? All right, thank you, guys. All right, moving on to staffing.
So staffing, we have a, a few notifications only for you. One track change, two leaves of absences, and a couple of, um, long-term substitutes. For your approval this evening, we have three retirements from, uh, three longstanding teachers for us. So I offer my congratulations to Mrs. Birdsey, uh, to Danny Callager, and to Kathy Kendall, and wish them well.
All right, so I'll need a motion to approve the retirements.
I'll make a motion to approve the three retirements as presented, effective June 30, 2025.
All right, I'll need a second. I'll second. By Rheta. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Teacher, student. Opposed. Abstaining. Was yours a yes? Yeah, unanimous. Everybody said yes. All right, go ahead.
Uh, next, I have a resignation for a speech pathologist. So, um, challenging positions for us to hire.
All right, I'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of the speech pathologist at Goffstown High School, effective 8/1, is that right?
Yeah, I think she's gonna work summer program for us.
Effective August 1, 2025.
All right, do I have a second? By Rheta. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, teacher said yes. All right, last one.
And lastly, um, into our dean of students position, I'm very pleased to bring the nomination of Goffstown High School current teacher, Janine Cassavant, as the dean of students.
I would like to make a motion to approve the nomination of Janine Cassavant as the Goffstown High School dean of students, effective July 1, 2025.
Allison, do I have a second? By Rheta. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, teachers and students said yes.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. So I saw this, were we supposed, this is just the updated calendar?
Yeah, this is the, this is the current year snow calendar, so we still, we're still holding tight into that last, uh, the week of June 16th. So we're, will now be done on June 20th. And, uh, at this point, I'm really hoping there are no more cancellation days. Uh, stranger things have happened.
Yes.
Floods and all kinds of other things, so.
All right, so we need our top three. Oh, we need to add that to the agendas. I keep forgetting.
I only, um, I only came up with two, so we'll need a third one, and all of this is up for discussion. The first one was welcoming, welcoming to new board members. And just so you know, we do a recap of three things that happened at the board meeting, um, so we have to pick them. Um, the other one that I thought was noteworthy was the softball field.
Yep.
Um, I thought it was a, a really clever kind of way of, um, using, using funds and fees and working this out between the softball league and the softball.
I might recommend the high school generator as the third.
Yeah.
Well, I, I thought, this is my.
Do you think we should be talking about the data breach? Because that did cause a lot of conversation from what people told us.
Uh, we've been talking about the data breach as long as we've known about it, as long as it's happened.
My, my concern about the, um, about the generator is, we haven't gotten the money yet. I don't want to jinx it. I think it'll be bigger after we get.
My question for you is, do you, you want me to post those three pieces of legislation on our website for people to easily access it?
I would say no. I, I think we should stay out of the business of posting legislation.
Agreed.
So we, we need.
Talking about those three bills?
Well, what I'm saying is that I think one of those bills in particular, I mean, you have one that is, people, I don't know if people know about this.
Well, the content of the bills will be part of the minutes, right? Because it was part of our package. So if anyone's so inclined, they can go to the minutes, they can get the numbers of the bills, they can do whatever they want with it, but, I mean.
What about the calendar? Oh, no, we haven't approved the calendar. The developments? We need a third thing.
Or just tracking, just a notice to track. Bills going through the state as one of the three things to know. Or tracking the developments. I could see either one of those. Right, well, we wouldn't be abdicating for anything, just telling people to take a look at it. Jared's smiling, though, what's he thinking?
I just, I look at the three things as, what's the executive summary? The key takeaways that we had as a discussion?
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, are those the three key takeaways we want people to know about? I mean, I've said mine, and.
What was your third?
I think we should be talking about the data breach, saying that the board has heard it.
Yeah.
We hear you, we're listening to you, and here's some of the things that were discussed as part of our non, or, uh, in public comments. That, that's my opinion. That's the only one that I actually wrote down.
I, I think it's worthwhile mainly because of the additional information we were able to provide, because people have questions. We're not answering everything, but we're explaining why, um, in the discussion, and.
Okay. Everybody good with the power school breach? As a third? Okay. All right, so we do have non-public, but is there anything else that may come before the meeting?
Yes.
Have we decided graduation dates yet?
Yeah, June 12th.
June 12th, for sure.
Yeah, right, same age.
Brady?
Eighth grader.
Does that sound like the date?
I have no idea.
Normally, I ask your mother.
I'm thinking Heather knows.
I, yeah, June 12th.
I know we did, we were talking about June 12th. Did we decide that on for eighth grade?
I thought that was at 2:00 in the afternoon.
We're gonna do them both on the same day. So the conversation with the discussion about eighth grade was it's a week before school gets out. So that just comes with its own unique set of general rules.
But we decided.
We decided we're gonna go with that. Correct.
All right, so, um, I need a motion, which one do you want to go on?
C.
C. All right, so I need a motion to go on a non-public session, RSA 91A32, under C.
So.
And who's that? Shane? Yeah, do I have a second?
I'll say.
By Caroline? All right, roll call.
Yes.
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 You have to say yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are in non-public, so now we pack up, and.